Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. This is a special meeting of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Commission. Today is December 19th, 2018. I would like to invite two students from the Lacey neighborhood, Kimberly and Valerie Castro, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free of gravity and justice for all.
Thank you, Kimberly and Valerie. Madam Recording Secretary, may you please take a walk?
Commissioner Garcia?
Present.
Commissioner Limon? Chair Ramos?
Present.
Vice Chair Santana?
Present.
Commissioner Ursua?
Present.
Commissioner Tardif?
Present.
Commissioner Frasier?
Present.
Commissioner Vasquez?
Present.
We have quorum. Thank you. This is time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar. Items include one and, one through two. So this is the minutes. Do any members have any corrections to the minutes? Or items that they wish to pull for separate discussion?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to let it be known, to let you know that I won't be voting on these items as I wasn't on the commission at that time.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif.
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Please say no. The matter is approved by a vote of seven, with one abstention by Commissioner Tardif. The next order of business is consideration of the regular business items. And I would like to disclose that I am recusing myself from this conversation because one of the developers that applied to be considered for the RFP, applied in conjunction with the Thrive Santana Community Land Trust. And my employer sits on that board.
I would also be recusing myself from this conversation. I'm a board member of Thrive Santana and that was one of the partners in applications for the process.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to make sure, do we have enough votes to move forward with official business?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Santana. We do have enough votes for our quorum, for today's meeting. Thank you for, everyone, for attending.
Thank you. The next order of business is considered of the regular business items. Can I have someone? Can I have, the first on the item on the business calendar is item number three, to approve a comments for the 99-year ground lease, The Habitat for Humanity of Orange County, for development of the Lacey Street project. Will staff please report on this matter?
Yes, thank you very much, Vice Chair Santana and Commissioners, fellow Commissioners. The, I want to start with a history of how we, how we got here before going into the project being recommended today for Habitat, the project award being recommended today for Habitat for Humanity. So, this actually dates back, the initial initiation of this entire process dates back to a city council meeting held last June 2017, in which city council awarded a sole source award of $14 million to two affordable housing projects at that meeting, after forming an ad hoc committee. And simultaneously, city council directed staff to develop a policy and criteria for the allocation of future affordable housing development funds. So that process initiated staff to start drafting affordable housing funds policies and procedures. The commission adopted those draft affordable housing funds policies and procedures on October 25th, 2017. Just one year and two months ago. And then, those policies and procedures were introduced to our EDIBT, our Economic Development Infrastructure Budget and Technology Committee, on November 13th. Then staff held a stakeholder meeting on December 19th. So one year from, one year, exactly one year ago. And, and then we brought back those policies and procedures to our Economic Development Infrastructure Budget and Technology Council Committee on January 8th. The council committee recommended that city council adopt those policies and procedures. And so therefore, staff brought those policies and procedures to the city council and Housing Authority Board on March 20th, 2018, for approval and adoption. Council unanimously adopted the procedures. And then, per section three of the Affordable Housing Funds Policies and Procedures that were adopted by city councils, staff drafted RFP number 18056 for affordable housing development, which would include all of our affordable housing funds, as well as four land assets that are held and managed by our housing authority. City council, after staff drafted that RFP, city council authorized issuance of the RFP on June 19th, 2018. And, and then subsequently, on July 2nd, the RFP was issued. That brings us to the beginning, you know, that's the background that brings us to the beginning of the staff report that you have in front of you today. The RFP was published in the OC Register in a public notice. An email was sent out to Orange County's largest affordable housing membership associations, including the Kennedy Commission, 211 Orange County, and the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. And an email was all, email blast was also sent out to all affordable housing developers that expressed, had expressed an interest in receiving notices from our, our housing division about funding opportunities for affordable housing development in the city. About, I think, over 200 organizations were notified of the opportunity. It was widely advertised. The first deadline for the city's RFP was then on August 15th. The city received 13 proposals in response to the RFP, requesting over $52 million and 304 project-based vouchers. So far more, the requests were for far more resources than the city has available for affordable housing development. As provided for in the, and as required in the Affordable Housing Funds Policies and Procedures, staff formed a review panel. That review panel consisted of our Executive Director of Public Works, our, with his designee, our Executive Director of our Planning Agency, with his designee, our Executive Director of our Community Development Agency, Mr. Stephen Mendoza, will be here a little later, and then our Housing Division, Division Manager. The review panel was advised by the Veterans Affairs of Long Beach, the, our financial real estate advisors at Kaiser Marston Associates, and MDG Associates. And they served as advisors to the, to the panel. Using the scoring and selection criteria in the RFP, it was the same scoring and selection criteria that was adopted by city council in the Affordable Housing Funds Policies and Procedures, that were adopted also by the commission last October. The review panel reviewed the proposals that were received by the city. The, on October 30th, through a very, I'd like to call a marathon session, starting at 7:30 and ending at 6 o'clock. Thank you to our developer partners who attended, who attended that meeting, those interviews. The review panel interviewed all of the developers. And then, on November 14th, our review panel met a second time and decided upon the projects and awards being recommended to the commission today. Following that, that decision, staff notified all of the developers in writing of the recommendations by the review panel, contingent on final approval by the Housing Commission and by our city council and Housing Authority Board. In regards to proposal that you won't be hearing today for the 1126 East Washington Avenue site. That site was made available for affordable housing development in the RFP. We received, of the 13 proposals, we received, eight of those proposals were for the 1126 East Washington Avenue site. The review panel recommended one of three developers to develop that site to the county of Orange. And so we're waiting, following a deliberative process by the county of Orange, we're waiting on the decision by the county before bringing back that particular parcel and award recommendation. But, for our first project, being, with all that history, all that background, and all the work and effort that went into a very transparent, thorough deliberative process to bring forward the recommendations to the commission today, we're excited to bring forward the first recommendation for an award for Habitat for Humanity of Orange County, for their Lacey Street project. The award, the developer requested the land asset held at 826 and 830 North Lacey Street, as well as $231,494. The review panel is recommending only the, the land asset through a long-term lease agreement at 826 and 830 North Lacey Street. The appraised value of the land asset, as of October 25th, 2018, is $578,000. And it is my privilege to introduce the developer to provide very much detailed information and respond to the commission on their project proposal.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Ellis. I'm the President and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Orange County. And we are happy to be here today to talk with you a little bit about the proposal for the Lacey Street development. Probably everyone has heard the name of Habitat for Humanity and knows it as an organization that does a significant amount of work in the housing community when it comes to affordable homeownership. But I thought it might be helpful to share a little bit about the background of Habitat. We are certainly known for affordable homeownership. We have been engaged in very low, low, and moderate income homeownership opportunities for families. In addition, I'll talk a little bit about family selection today and some of the other programs that we are engaged in, in the world of housing. So, basically, the mission of Habitat is really to put love and faith into action. And Habitat for Humanity of Orange County does that by bringing people together to bring, to build homes, community, and hope. Habitat as an organization was founded in 1976. And in, it is a worldwide organization. Across the United States, there are about 1,300 affiliates that build homes. In the past fiscal year, I'm sorry, in the past year, Habitat as an organization has built about 12,000 homes across the United States. Habitat is actually the largest builder of homes in the world and had been credited with building over 800,000 homes around the world. Some of the things that I think are of no surprise to you is the entry level median home price for families here in Orange County. And that hovers somewhere around the $745,000 range. Being one of the most expensive places to live, both in California and the United States, finding ways to identify ways for families to actually purchase homes is something that I think is of great concern to all of us. And my, my background, before I joined Habitat, was really in education. I actually was a teacher and administrator in this district for several years. One of the things that always was a great pain to me was identifying some of the concerns that children struggled with. And one of them was the instability of housing. And so, as I look at the homes that we build, I'm always looking at it through the lens of how will this impact the children? What will the second generation look like when they have the stability that comes with a home that they know they can come back to every night, their parents can afford, and they can live and sleep and work and study and grow in stability and comfort? So, why do we do this? Well, what Habitat is looking to do is to build strength within a community and a family, stability, and self-reliance through that tool of shelter. So, our families, I think there is a misconception by some people that we give homes away. That is actually not the case. Families have to qualify. They must demonstrate a need for affordable housing. And in that need, they are going to take on some great responsibilities. They in fact will be assuming a mortgage. They're responsible for down payment and closing costs. And, they have to show a willingness to partner with us. That means they're putting in 500 hours of sweat equity. When they are building their home, there becomes a, just an incredible transformation of what happens to that family when they become invested in what they are actually going to be living in. And, one of the things that I always look at when we are working is what is the impact of this on the children? And what they see are two things. Number one, mom and dad are working really hard and something amazing happens because of that hard work. And number two, people are giving back in a way that supports their family. And hopefully, all of those adults will become role models for those children. So as they grow up, they become invested in their community and find ways to give back. One of the things that I will say about our families before I go on to the homes is that they are acquiring equity. And I don't know how many of you really understand the impact of that. But if we are really looking for ways to sever the pathway of poverty, it is to establish ways for families to acquire equity in their homes, whether it's for them or that next generation, that equity becomes something that is of great value. We have built several homes in Santa Ana. In fact, we've built 30 houses here. One thing that I think is of great value for you to understand is that not one of those homes in Santa Ana, nor any of the homes that we have built in Orange County, have ever gone into foreclosure. Which I think says a lot about not only the families, but the program that really brings these two together, the home and the family and the opportunity for homeownership. We just finished five homes on McFadden. And we were very happy that we just closed the last escrow on those homes. I'm not going to read this for you, but I think that you all have it. It's an overview of what Habitat has done. And of those 30 homes in Santa Ana, we are pleased again to talk to you about creating another opportunity for Habitat to participate with the city. The project that we are looking at is the corner of Lacey and Vance Streets. And it really would consist of two homes in the historic French Park community. So I'm going to turn this over to Troy Hendrickson. And I'll let him kind of continue with a little bit more of the project description.
Good evening. My name is Troy Hendrickson. I am the Vice President of Land Development and Acquisition for Habitat of Orange County. So we are going to speak a little bit specifically to the project that we are proposing this evening. As is consistent with the development and design guidelines of the historic French Park community, the lot sizes here in question do not allow us to build any more than one home on each of these lots. Initially, we had proposed through our first submittal to the RFP to duplicate our single-story Craftsman home that we did on Bush Street. That presentation, or I should say, that submittal preceded our first meetings. We did reach out to French Park. We've had multiple meetings since. It became apparent pretty early on that that product on those lots was simply not going to work. They were undersized for the 7,500 square foot lots. And, it was made very clear that they would not support that particular product. So, that said, what we did was, we, we went back to the drawing board with our architect and came up with a couple of different, different products. Two different, a single-story Craftsman-style home at about 1,550 square feet, sided by a Victorian-style, two-story home, three, possibly four-bedroom, in the area of 1,650 square feet. And to be consistent with the French Park, that, that one, which is the corner unit of Vance and Lacey, will actually have a wraparound deck. We, what we are proposing are, both of these homes will be moderate, for sale for moderate qualifying income families, up to 120% of area median. And, we do have some pictures here. I'm going to roll through this a little bit. This was sort of the flavor on a couple of walks that we did with the French Park Committee, just to get the essence of the community and what their level of expectation would be in terms of finishes and style. And, I think, looking through it, you can see there's quite a bit of detail. I'm sure you've all been through the area before. And, we are being tasked with finding a way to duplicate this level of detail and craftsmanship on this affordable project. What you're looking at here, towards the end of our, that just precedes our actual elevations, is a letter of support from French Park. These multiple meetings did, we were able to get their support and they would like to work with Habitat, moving forward, to develop this project. This here is the sort of enhanced front elevation of that single-story Craftsman. This would be the two-story corner with the wraparound deck, as we proposed. And, here we have the site plan. Again, we're talking about, overall, the two lots is about, I think, 1,500 and, I'll say 15,000 square feet. And with a 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, it was impossible to build additional units. I think something that we all would have strove to do, but it was simply not practical, given the requirements of the French Park. That is essentially what we are proposing. The product that we are now tasked with developing is something that we do not have in our, in our library. We will need to develop this product. And, as far as simple affordable housing goes, which is what we strive to achieve, we don't envision using this product in the future. It's all in the interests of satisfying the French Park Committee. So, at that, I guess, questions or?
Thank you so much, Sharon.
Could I just add a few other comments here? The, the opportunity to do this is one that we value. But at the same time, I think we need to be realistic about what it is we have the opportunity to do. Both of these, we're going to, we are basically building two custom homes. These are not what we traditionally do when we can move from one city to another and take plans that work in one place and adapt them a little bit for another city to meet the requirements. These are going to be very unique homes. I think they would be incredible additions to the community. But, there is a cost to that. And I, I need to be very honest with all of you that that cost is something that will impact whether we are able to move forward with this project. Because, it is going to be unique and very specific to a particular part of the, the community. So, I, I kind of leave that with you because it is something that we all really need to take into consideration. We would never want to do less than a quality job. And, that really takes, I think, a partnership between the city and the developer to make sure that we are bringing forth our best efforts to make this happen. And, our expectations, I think, would both be high. So with that expectation in mind, we need to understand there is a cost to making that happen. So, thank you. And we're open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your, thank you for your presentation. I believe that we're just missing this one slide in our packets. Are there Commissioners, is this slide missing? This one up here?
I have it.
I have it.
Oh, maybe, maybe it was just mine. That being said, does the commission have any questions for staff?
Can you question the applicant?
Does the commission have any questions for staff or applicant?
Yes, of course, that's why, for staff or the applicant.
I'm sorry, what's your first name again?
Sharon.
Sharon. Troy, thanks for making your presentation here.
Thank you.
I was wondering, what do you envision as the qualifications for an applicant to purchase these homes?
They would need to be in an income range of 80 to 120% of the area median income. We are looking for families that have a debt-to-income ratio of 10% or less. They need to be able to identify need. So, that would mean that we are really looking at families that have a very difficult current housing situation. And they would be going through a process that we consistently use with all of our families.
How will the, you say there's going to be an added cost for developing this type of home? How will that affect the applicant? Purchasing the home?
Well, we, we commit that not more than 35% of their income. That's how we determine what the, the mortgage will be. Is, it would not exceed 35% of their income. So, the cost of housing, the cost of building it and what a, a family can afford, oftentimes there is a gap. And we need to find ways to fill that gap. Usually, we are, we are looking to cities to help identify that and help reduce that gap. And, we also do fundraising to also reduce the gap. So a family ends up with an income, I'm sorry, with a mortgage that they can afford because it's really based on their income, not on the cost of the house.
Okay, are you, are you asking for the city for funds at this time? I'm not sure that works. What are we approving, Judson?
The, the review panel considered their request by Habitat for Humanity for the 231,494. And the panel only had a limited amount of funds to provide to the affordable, the four affordable housing projects that are being recommended today. And in order to maximize the, the impact of those affordable housing funds and the land assets being provided, the, the panel is only recommending the, the land asset itself for Habitat.
Okay. Are you going to be able to make it with that?
We would really need to look at the cost. I, I have a concern about it.
Okay, so we're just, basically, tonight we'd be okaying to go ahead to kind of, for the city to work with Habitat for Humanity to, to do what we can, which is the land asset. And then they're going to do what they can and see if it works out. Is that what it is?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Tardif. The Habitat acknowledged and accepted the award, contingent on, on approval by the commission and by the city council and housing authority. But, if the commission approves the recommendation by staff, staff would recommend to the, to the Housing Authority Board a commitment letter with Habitat for 99-year ground lease for 826 North Lacey and 830 North Lacey Street.
Okay. Another question, how does a 99-year ground lease work? I mean, who owns the property after that? It goes back to the city? Not that any of us are going to be around at that time, but...
Yes, it would revert back to the city after that 99 years. That, that, that would be one of the clauses in the agreement.
Would there be some way to work out for whoever owns the house at that time to be able to purchase the, the ground, along with the house?
For the current homeowners who are residing there to purchase the home?
Yeah.
That's something that staff can explore in the, in the agreement with, with, with Habitat. Yeah, that's something we can look into.
Okay, thank you. One final question, will Jimmy Carter be working on this project?
You know what? Former President Carter is certainly an incredible person who has been to many builds, both here and around the world. And, he actually came when we built a development down in Rancho Santa Margarita. We did a development of 48 homes and he was there. But I cannot promise he would be at this one. would be at this one.
Okay, thank you.
But I could ask. Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to go?
I just have a quick comment or question too. So I'm really glad to hear that the French Park community has been receptive of this development. That's great to hear. You mentioned that this style is very unique to you, to your organization. Who will you be consulting with to in the design of this when you're designing it?
Honestly, it'll be a collaboration if we're able to move forward. We did engage, we actually brought our architect who participated in the in the walkthrough with representatives from the committee to sort of see firsthand some of the slides that we presented. So it would be it would be, again, collaboration would be the simplest way to put it. I mean, we know this doesn't move forward without the support of French Park. We're not naive to that. So we know that we need them, but we also need a, you know, a skilled architect to sort of make it reality.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm I'm curious, when you mentioned that there's a cost that that could be entailed in this, what happens once the the ninety-nine-year ground lease is if we if we do okay that and then that cost can't be resolved down the road? Are we looking at an empty lot for another ninety-nine years? What are?
We we would not move into a ground lease agreement until we had a certainty that we could build the project.
Okay, so that cost is not as huge of a concern then, resolving that cost?
The the cost to build?
Well, you said that there was a cost that was going to come that we're going to have to manage between the mortgage and the debt ratio of the consumer? Is that correct?
Yeah, and just just to clarify that, whatever we get built, our families are not impacted by that. They are fixed in at that thirty percent.
Okay, I just wanted to see the value of that cost. Thank you.
Commissioner Frager, if I might add too, every one of the commitment letters that will be awarded by the City Council and or Housing Authority to the developers, they will all have a two-year expiration date. So if the developers unable to secure their remaining financing within those two years, then the then the commitments will expire.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
So I will just wait, make one more comment. You know, I think when we had initially looked at this, I think both Troy and I had envisioned something that would be a little bit more substantial when it came to housing. And I I know the French Park's position on one house, but I would just say if I had my wish list, it would be that we would have a house and a garage with probably a carriage unit or a second unit on that site. So that kind of option would certainly make things a little bit more palatable for for us on the financial side, but I I don't honestly know if that's something realistic that we could look at down the road that would really be.
And I think there's other properties in that area that have what you're talking about.
Yeah, so that that may be something we can look at. Okay, thank you. Thank you all, appreciate the time.
To build on that too, if if Habitat is is able to get the support of the French Park Neighborhood Association for four units on that on that that project, then staff would move forward with that recommendation to the to City Council for two, the development of two units instead of four.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? If so, you may file a request to speak with the Recording Secretary. You have three minutes to speak. Also, once we begin the public comment session, if you haven't already done so, please give your form to the Recording Secretary. Has anyone here speak on this matter? We have one person walking out. Maybe not, okay.
Can I ask another question of staff?
Yes.
Thank you, Richard. Ninety-nine-year ground lease, is that something that the city has done in the past? Is that normal for us or just wondering why we didn't just gift the property to?
Thank you so much for that that question, Commissioner Tardif. Actually, the the concept of a ninety-nine-year ground lease originated with the work by a local nonprofit by the name of Thrive Santa Ana. Thrive Santa Ana has is has formed and is trying to form a community land trust here and here in our community in order to maintain properties in affordable in perpetuity. And when staff researched that idea, attended some trainings on that on that concept, that concept absolutely makes sense because if the land is gifted to the developer and then after thirty years or or fifty-five years and in the other cases with the tax credit properties, that land and that asset then reverts to a private market development, then fifty-five years down the road, our housing commissioners and our staff are are going to still be facing the same affordability issues and and that land asset will no longer be available for be a an affordable housing land asset. So the the vision, the the concept is to keep that land asset in as affordable in perpetuity. And the state only allows our Housing Authority to execute a ground lease for up to ninety-nine years, but the idea is to keep it in affordable in perpetuity.
Thank you.
And then if I could just add one more comment to that, Habitat has built homes throughout Orange County, and we have worked with many cities that have a timeframe on that piece of property that it must remain affordable. In addition to that, Habitat has installed with every single one of our homes a deed restriction of sixty years. A family needs to be living in that home for sixty years before they own it outright. So when family number one sells that home and we qualify family number two, the sixty years starts over again in our Habitat model. So.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to approve item three? To approve a commitment for a ninety-nine-year ground lease to the Habitat for Humanity of Orange County for the development of the Lacey Street project? Does anyone second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasquez. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you need us to read the entire motion, Judson? I know we've done that in the past, or they have they do that in some some of the commissions here?
Yeah, typically, we would have the entire recommended action read into the record, but, you know, we also understand that if you say, you know, we'll make a motion based on the recommended action, since it's in the agenda packet, we understand, but it is preferable to read it if possible.
Any opposed? Matter is approved by four zero. Thank you, Mr. Tardif. There's a reason why Sessi chose you to be up here? Great questions, good keeping this moving.
And Vice Chair Santana, actually, five, five zero.
Five zero. It's so that's why I want to get that squared away. I understand the student, just.
A non-voting member.
Non-voting.
We have five remaining commissioners for the quorum. As five is important.
Five zero, thank you so much. The second item on the business calendar is item number four, to approve a pre-loan commitment for one, one million sixty, can you read that number?
Of course.
Thank you.
For one million sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars.
Forty-seven for affordable housing funds, a ninety-nine-year ground lease and a three project-based voucher to HomeAid Orange County and Mercy House Living Centers for the development of the Francis Javier Residence Project. Will staff please report on this matter?
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Santana and members of the commission. We are excited, again, without going into the detail of the RFP process, which I provided on the last item, we're excited to present our recommendation for the Francis Xavier Residence Project to be developed by HomeAid Orange County and Mercy House Living Centers. The developer requested one million fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars in eight project-based vouchers. The eight project-based vouchers has a substantial value in liquid cash. The review panel, after reviewing the proposals received for this site, is recommending a lease agreement for eight oh one East Santa Ana Boulevard. The appraised value of the of the land asset as of October twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen was seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars, as well as one million sixty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars from our Low and Modern Income Housing Asset Fund and three project-based vouchers. It's my privilege to introduce the developer and development team.
Well, good evening. My name is Scott Larson, and I apologize, I've got a little bit of a little bit of a cough, so if I fail to get through, I've got several of my members of my team that are here and you'll be hearing from them as well. I'm the Executive Director for HomeAid Orange County, and it's a privilege to be here tonight to present to you the Francis Xavier Residence. As I mentioned, we have several of our team members here, Larry Haynes, the Executive Director of Mercy House, Mark Keiner, who's a Principal at Vicenian Lagone Architects, is also our incoming Board President for HomeAid Orange County. And you can see some of the other members of our team that have been participating in this project to date. I do want to let you know a little bit about HomeAid, that we were established here in Orange County thirty years ago, and we are now a nationwide movement with about seventeen chapters around the country, started by the local homebuilding industry. And you can see on here on this slide, there's some diversity of projects that we've done. We'll be dedicating our sixty-third development right after the first part of the year in the city of Fullerton. That's going to be serving transitionally-aged youth. We've done projects throughout the county for families, for individuals, for domestic violence, ranging from ground-up construction, remodels of apartment buildings to commercial properties. You'll see that we take a very unique approach to our projects since we were started by the homebuilding industry. We approach projects from a charitable perspective. You'll see here a number of our teams that we've employed on our projects, the one that I mentioned in Fullerton, Artie Olson and Intracorp, developer are part of, and it's been a great honor to represent the homebuilding industry and projects throughout the county. Specifically in Santa Ana, we do have a rich history, going back to the early days of HomeAid and our relationship with Mercy House, where we initially developed the Regina House Residence for for women and children. We subsequently went on to develop Emmanuel House and then across the street from that, the San Miguel Residences. Those three properties were properties that were owned by the city of Santa Ana, and it was truly a partnership with the city of Santa Ana and federal government dollars as well as HomeAid to develop Emmanuel House and the two San Miguel Residences for Mercy House Living Centers. What we saw at the time was back then, about ten years ago, was this vacant piece of property at the corner of Garfield and Santa Ana Boulevard. We had discussions in two thousand and eight with the redevelopment agency and had proposals moving forward to develop the site at that time. We spent a couple of years working with the city and the staff to propose a project, which you'll hear about in a few minutes. And then unfortunately, a couple of things took place. There was actually a lawsuit that was filed against the city, not tied to this project necessarily, but tied to other developments that had properties on them or buildings on them that may have been considered historic. Took a couple of years to settle that lawsuit, and in the meantime, the state disbanded the redevelopment agencies and so in in roughly two thousand and ten, the project went by the wayside. And we've been waiting since that time for the RFP to come out again for this development, which you now have before you, which was issued in two thousand and eighteen. You'll see on this slide the proximity of this vacant lot to the Emmanuel House and San Miguel Residences. It's about a block down the street, which is why we felt at the time and still do today that this is a perfect synergy for us as HomeAid to develop this project for Mercy House to operate. I do want to introduce Larry Haynes, the Executive Director of Mercy House, to talk a little bit about the program and the services and the the residents that will be at the future Francis Xavier Project. Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Commissioner. Thank you for allowing us to present to you this evening. It is an honor and a privilege to bring this project forward. This is something that's been a labor of love for us, this specific project, for a number of years, as Scott has mentioned. Before I talk about the services and the programs, just real briefly, one of the things that I'd want to point out, and I think it is quite noticeable in the slides that were presented in just a quick drive around town, the when HomeAid and Mercy House have partnered on a project, the quality really stands out. If you were to go down the street of any projects where we operate, they are the best projects there in terms of development, in terms of upkeep. Being a good neighbor is something that is paramount to us. Santa Ana is our birthplace. I've had the privilege to be Mercy House's original employee, so I've been there since nineteen ninety. And this is the town that we've grown in, so this is very personal for us and something we're quite proud of. When we talk about programming the target populations, we want to emphasize that this is, in fact, permanent housing. We do at Mercy House a number of other types of programs, but this emphasis is on permanent housing. And the reason that that is so important is it really is how it is housing that ends homelessness. Now, we are targeting for this project, we do have an emphasis on permanent supportive housing, and we have the ability and the design to also serve homeless families, and we do know that the permanent supportive housing need is more predominantly in with single individuals. But let me talk about why that's, I think I'm losing this, why that's important and the fact that we feel qualified to serve either. One of the reasons that we do want to go deep, one of the reasons that we do want to provide housing for those who would qualify for permanent supportive housing is that these are the most vulnerable people living on our streets today. These are the people that are, in fact, the most desperate. And even if altruism doesn't move us, what we know through research, through data, not simply anecdote, what we know is that these are the folks that are costing our communities the most amount of money. So if altruism doesn't move us, let business sense move us. We know through the study at UC Irvine, for example, to simply allow someone to live on the streets, to do nothing, to walk away, costs our communities over a hundred thousand dollars a year. We know that. And so we believe that this is not only an altruistic humanitarian intervention that we're proposing here, but one that just makes good common sense as well. Now, the design of the building, and I will stop in just about thirty seconds, thanks for indulging me, allows for us to focus solely on individuals or to include families as well. We do have in the original design some three-bedroom units, if I'm not mistaken. Those can easily be redesigned to focus on individuals, and we are happy to engage in a productive conversation with your staff to create a project that is the most socially relevant for the city of Santa Ana. I appreciate your time this evening. So with that, I'd like to introduce to you Mark Keiner, the architect from when we originally were working on this project, from Vicenian Lagone, to walk you through the current design.
Good afternoon. The project as originally designed is twelve units and is a mix of one-through-three-bedroom product. The idea that it focuses around a central courtyard, which allows the individuals and families to have some privacy and security to enjoy their lives. It also is important in terms of the architecture, how it interacts with the street, because it's a pretty significant corner there, and we wanted to make sure that it addresses that both on Santa Ana and Garfield. So the the design is based on the criteria for the city, and we've got, while it's inwardly located in terms of access to the units primarily, around the edge, all the building units that are on the edge have access via either patio space so that it engages with the street front. And I know that we've been asked to consider potentially having some sort of small retail component in there, which and we can deal with that as we work with the size of the units. The floor plan, as you see, has a primary entry off of Santa Ana Boulevard that comes into an intake area, an office space. There's a common gathering space that the units can work with, and then they work around. There is parking on the off the alley. There is a combination of tandem garage and single-car garage, and then some parking that it comes up adjacent to Santa Ana Boulevard. On the second floor, we have a continuation of units, and then the original design has some storage area over the garage. And I think, again, depending on how we end up deciding the units are going to work, we'll work with considering possibly putting a unit or two over there. Won't change the total unit count, but just the layout and how it works. These are the elevations. The upper piece is the interior courtyard, you can see with a fireplace, and then the the lower piece is the Garfield Street elevation. The upper piece is your alley with the garages tandem there and then the Santa Ana Boulevard, which would be the area where we would potentially, probably closer to the corner, we might put some of that retail element in there. The conceptual landscape plan that was done for us by New York landscape firm. The conceptual landscape plan that was done for us by New York landscape firm, you can see the place for kids, play area, active seating area within the courtyard, and then highly engaged on the street with nice landscape. With that...
So we sincerely appreciate the opportunity to have the land, as well as funding from the city, and three of the veterans' housing vouchers. We did, as Judson Brown had mentioned, had applied for eight. With the reduction, or even just in general, there were other funding sources and are other funding sources that we are pursuing. Currently, there is the No Place Like Home funding, which will be coming down from the state of California, we'll be applying for that, and traditional Homemade in-kind, and we didn't really go too much in-depth on that at the beginning, but traditionally, we have been able to, through in-kind donations from the homebuilding industry, reduce costs anywhere from forty to sixty percent. Whether or not it's on the pre-development side with our consultants, when we recruit a builder, we ask them to do it at no profit, and also to cover potentially some of their general conditions. So our whole objective is to reduce costs through in-kind donations. We don't know what that ultimately is till the end of the project, but every step along the way, we ask people to be involved charitably. And if need be, and we already are approaching some private funders and donors, because of the veterans' component, we feel that that is something that people would contribute to from a corporation or private donor perspective. And then we all are also in discussions with a couple of banks, in reference to a traditional bank loan for any gap financing that we might need. So again, as I mentioned, this project has the opportunity to have larger units in it, definitely serves low-income families and individuals, and the focus on veterans is the request that we've come to you on. So again, we are committed to this property, we've been committed for over ten years to this property, and we feel that it does fit within that transit district, and are very excited to bring this back to that corridor, and we feel that it's a benefit also, because we're not solely dependent upon tax credits, we can, if need be, but due to our private-sector approach, we feel that it is not needed to approach from a tax credit standpoint. And as you have seen, we have a rich history, both Homemade and Mercy House, in the local community, and are developing specifically along Garfield in Santa Ana. So we just want to thank you, and open this up for questions for myself, our team, from either staff or the members of the council. Yes, please.
It's not gated, right?
No, it is not, it is not designed to be gated at this point. There is a primary entrance into the facility, but it is not gated at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Vazquez. Mr. Tardif, do you have anything to say?
Yes. And one of the photographs shows there's an existing small house on it. The house itself is not really impressive.
And that house is no longer there.
Oh, it's not there, okay.
That was there when we first were designing the project, and subsequently, that house has been removed by, somewhere along the way, by the city of Santa Ana. So it's a vacant lot.
Okay. I was just going to say, there is some history involved there, because it would be, it's a historic small home, and that's how Santa Ana was developed many years ago. I was hoping that it could be moved, but...
Well, and that was the base of the lawsuit, and that, when that was settled, different properties had buildings on them, and they were moved or determined that they weren't needed. So that was the base of the delay on a number of properties in Santa Ana at that time.
Maybe Judson could look into that, just as a matter of curiosity. I'd like to know what happened to that little house. I went to school there, St. Joseph's, and I'm kind of part of the neighborhood. See, another question I have is Francis Xavier. Can you let me know how you came up with that name?
Yeah, I'm actually going to turn that over to Larry Haynes.
Oh, man, I'm going to bomb this badly. So our founder and chairman is a Roman Catholic priest, Father Jerome Cartcher, who is the pastor at St. Vincent de Paul Parish in Huntington Beach. When he founded Mercy House, he was a priest at St. Anne's, and Francis Xavier is named after a saint. And as you notice, a lot of Mercy House of our projects have that, Emmanuel, San Miguel, Regina, St. Joseph, et cetera. So it's just consistent with some of our branding.
Okay. Did you say it was Father Cartcher?
Yes, Father Jerome Cartcher.
A part of the Cartcher family?
He is, yes.
Carl's Jr.? Great. And, oh, you were involved in the depot at Santiago? That's a great project.
Well, and actually, I, tonight, not able to join us are our pro bono advisors from CNC Development, Todd Cottle and Scott Baring. They're part of our pro bono development team, and we included that because it, you know, reflects the work, the good work that they're doing in the community. So they're part of our team.
Okay, great. I think you have a great team. Thank you.
Commissioner Fraser?
I guess I just have one question on the vouchers. It sounds like you're wanting to give veterans' preference to those three vouchers, or are those going to be three open vouchers? How do you propose to handle veterans' preference?
Yeah, the city had provided specifically the veterans, the VASH vouchers, so it is specifically targeting for veterans.
Okay, for all three of those?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you for the presentation. I have no questions or comments.
I have just a couple of comments, or questions, actually. The first one is, for the veterans, are the veterans based here in Santa Ana? Do they get preference?
One of the things that we will be working with the staff on is utilizing two things. One is coordinated entry, which is a system of care in the county to prioritize those that are homeless on the streets, and the preference will be for those residents being from Santa Ana. So it is a request from staff in the city that we use not only a coordinated entry, but there is the Santa Ana residency requirement.
Thank you. My second question is for the two- and three-bedroom units. I know parking could be very scarce here in the city of Santa Ana, so expecting one vehicle per unit, or, that kind of seems kind of far-fetched, though. Can you go over a little more in detail about parking?
Well, there's a couple of things that we've looked at, and I'll either let Mark or Larry address this as well. We typically look at the history of residents in our developments and their need for cars, and it traditionally has been almost a one-to-one ratio. And then in addition, Mark has worked through this from a design standpoint, so I don't know if either of you want to address that.
I think the key component is the proximity to public transportation, which is very close, and our past history, both in actually affordable product, is either one or less per unit on average, and we typically haven't had any problems with that.
So let's say I have a family of three, and I have two vehicles. Would the property manager work with the tenants? Because I know you said something about the Santa Ana Boulevard structure. Does that mean that the tenant has to pay off-site parking, or how does that work?
Let me step into that, just because we would be managing this project. We would be able to work that out with whoever's there, but also, please, keep in mind that if we are targeting those that are of very low income, particularly those who would possibly qualify for permanent supportive housing, the likelihood, especially of a family, then having, say, two vehicles that we'd need to park, the scenario of which you are describing is extremely unlikely, just to put that out as a perspective. But should that happen, we will be able, as the property manager, be able to work through those issues.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? If so, you may fill out a request-to-speak form with the Recorder's Secretary. You have three minutes to speak. Also, we will not accept any additional request-to-speak cards once we begin the public comment session. If you haven't already done so, please give your form to the Recording Secretary. Just give it a minute. Thank you. All right, Mr. Castillo.
Good afternoon. On this project here, I was noticing that the, we use a lot this affordable housing, and on here, I don't see anything on cost or anything affordable housing. I hear that we'll see in a couple of years, when it's built, how much it's going to cost. I think we should be pushing more on issues of cost, because they're saying that this is built for the residents of Santa Ana, and, you know, three bedrooms is a great thing, because that does reflect the residents of Santa Ana, but on here, I don't see anything on cost. What is going to cost the residents of Santa Ana to live there? And how many are three-bedroom, how many, and so on. These are questions I think the commission should be asking these developers, so they do reflect our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Next up, can I please have Laura?
Mi nombre es Laura Pantoja. Soy residente de Santana y trabajo en una organización que se llama Latino Health Access. Tengo más de diez años trabajando el área de la IC. Creo que he tocado más del sesenta por ciento de las casas que hay. Y veo con mucha preocupación y dolor como familias tienen que rentar closets o áticos para vivir en esta área. Hemos tenido, hemos abogado muchos años aquí con otras comisiones. Es la primera vez que vengo con esta nueva mesa para proyectos de vivienda accesible, porque hemos visto que algunos de nuestros residentes sí han podido acceder a vivir ahí, pero la mayoría todavía no alcanza por los bajos salarios que tienen. Hace alrededor de cuatro años, se hizo un documento que se llama "Lacy in Crisis", la data del pueblo, donde tocamos casi todas las casas de esa área de la IC Logan, para ver cuáles son las condiciones de vivienda, y fue encabezada por unos doctores que es de la Universidad de Wisconsin y la organización que hay en Comision. Espero que lo hayan leído como ustedes, que son ahora nuevos miembros de este Consejo de Vivienda, porque sería muy útil que conocieran los datos y la data, porque atrás de cada dato hay familias y personas. Entonces, yo vengo aquí para preguntarles de este proyecto que acaban de presentar, qué por ciento, del treinta por ciento de vivienda va a haber en este proyecto? Porque hemos visto que la gente que vive en la IC a su alrededor, sus ingresos son muy bajos. Entonces quiero saber cuántas familias pueden ser beneficiadas, porque cuando la base es ochenta o sesenta, la mayoría de nuestras familias que viven en esa área no son beneficiadas. Y también pedimos que tengan estas viviendas, dos o tres camadas, porque las familias son grandes.
Casas.
I'm Laura Pantoja, and I'm a resident of Santa Ana for many years, and an organization, with an organization called Latino Health Access. I've been working in the community for more than ten years. I've touched personally more than sixty percent of the homes there in my work there, and I'm concerned about families that are there. It pains me to see them living in these conditions, living in attics in these places. So I would like to advocate for others, and we need to have first affordable housing in these units, and we've had accessible housing, and we need to be really accessible housing for the people who have really low income. About four years ago, I've been, there was a study called "Lacy in Crisis", and I hope that you are familiar with this location. We went to Lacy and Logan neighborhood, we touched most of the homes to get this information. This was created or spearheaded by doctors from Wisconsin University, and I hope that you have read or will read this study, because it's very good to know the data, and better than knowing the data, knowing that the families and the people, and the individuals behind that data. So I'd like to know more about this project, that this really for accessible housing, for low, really low-income people. What percentage of people are you going to be serving, and at what percentage of the base income are you serving them? Because it doesn't help many families, because if you have a base of eighty percent or sixty percent of the base income, many families will not be able to qualify for that, and we need more units with two and three bedrooms. That's because that reflects the Santa Ana.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Do we have a motion to approve item number four?
Can we have some more discussion, Richard?
You could open the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of you. Yeah, we could have the motion and then have discussion after that, right?
I don't...
Yeah, motion in a second, then discussion.
Awesome. Let me go back. Do we have a motion to approve item number four, to approve the pre-loan commitment of one million six-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven for affordable housing funds, a nine-year ground lease, and a three-project-based vouchers to Homemade, Orange County, and Mercy House Living Centers for the development of the Francis Javier Residence Project? Does anyone second the motion?
I'll second it. But you're looking for first or second?
We second, so, all those in favor?
Oh, wait, we're going to have a discussion, right?
Yes, so the motion, so Vice Chair Santana, you made the motion. Commissioner Tardif, you seconded the motion, and now it is open for discussion.
Go ahead. Okay, I'd like to address Mr. Castillo's question on the cost of the housing, of the homes. If you could address that, Judson, how that is going to be calculated, and how that will be determined.
Of course. So, thank you very much, Commissioner Tardif. These units are for families, are dedicated for permanent supportive housing for homeless individuals, and are the, have the deepest affordability, because they're serving the lowest-income, most vulnerable members of our community. Mr. Larson can provide some information on the rent amounts that may be charged for these units once they're developed.
We've talked about a variety of different things, following Mercy House's example in, for example, the San Miguel Residences.
Let me just suggest that everybody in the development team agrees fully, that these should be for the most affordable, the most vulnerable people out there. That is exactly what we are proposing. With due respect to the comments that were made, nobody is residing here who is at sixty or eighty percent of the area median. We are talking thirty percent or less. We are talking in terms of rents out of the pockets of the folks who are there, thirty percent adjusted gross income. These are providing subsidies and housing for the poorest, the most economically disadvantaged people in the entire city. We completely agree with the comments that were made, and that's exactly who are housing. There just simply may be some disconnect because of our presentation, and we apologize for that.
Yeah, and then with how we approach to be able to get those levels of affordability, obviously, there's the subsidies and the VASH vouchers, et cetera, but also through the donations from the industry, we're able to lower the base cost of the project, and thus charge, as Larry was mentioning, you know, at the lowest possible rate possible for these projects, for the residents that will be there at the thirty percent in that ballpark, thirty percent of area median.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Well, we got a motion, we got a second. Anyone else want to discuss? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved by five zero. The third item on the business calendar is item number five, to approve the pre-loan commitment of one million six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand forty-seven of affordable housing funds, and eighty-nine project-based vouchers to Jamboree Housing for the Budget Inn project. Will staff please report on this matter?
Thank you, Vice Chair Tardif. Staff, we'd like to invite up Jamboree Housing for a presentation on this project, on this rehabilitation project. The Jamboree Housing requested two million dollars and eighty-nine project-based vouchers from the city for the development of this project. The review panel is recommending an award of eighty-nine project-based vouchers and one million six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand forty-seven dollars for this project.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Massey. I'm Senior Vice President of Jamboree, and we are thrilled to have some time to discuss the budget-in development that we have proposed. I'm going to take advantage of that time by asking you all to focus on the picture that we have up now, this first slide. This is where we're going, as we intend to take an operating motel and turn it into homes and a platform for services for eighty-nine homeless veterans. This is something we're terribly enthusiastic about. I'm going to tell you a little bit about who we are, and what we do, and how we're going to get there, and also where we're starting from. But as we go through it, I hope that you'll keep in mind that this is where we're going, this is the focus of what we're doing. We're going to turn a motel into something that fits in with a transitioning neighborhood, and will be a safe, decent, clean, affordable home for eighty-nine veterans, and, as I mentioned, a platform for services. I think this is an excellent rendering of where we're going. I hate that you can't see in the windows, you can't see the people, because that's really who we're serving, and the services that we'll be providing is an important part of that. As I said, my name is Michael Massey. I'm also accompanied tonight by George Circe, who's our Senior Vice President of Community Impact, as well as Natalie Reader, who's our Director of Community Impact, and John O'Kura, who's our Project Management Director, who has shepherded the... que ha heredado el aspecto de gestión del proyecto hasta ahora, mientras hemos pasado por el comité de selección. También tenemos a nuestro arquitecto de Arquitects Design Collaborative, Chris Weimhold, aquí. Así que él es disponible para responder cualquier pregunta que puedan tener. Así que como dije, voy a presentarles un poco a Jamboree o, con suerte, presentarles a Jamboree. Pero Jamboree no necesita ninguna introducción al ciudadano de Santa Ana. Tenemos una larga y exitosa relación con la ciudad representada aquí por dos de nuestros desarrollos, Cornerstone, que es en la mini calle. Desarrollamos esto hace 15 años y estamos a punto de hacer un rehabilitación de este proyecto y he estado trabajando con el personal de cerca en eso. Y aún más emocionante, nuestro hogar de veteranos, que acabamos de cerrar financiando esta semana y comenzaremos la construcción de eso en el nuevo año. Esperamos que todos ustedes estén atendiendo nuestra grava en January 7th para lo que seguro será un nuevo desarrollo muy emocionante y continuar nuestra relación con el ciudadano de Santa Ana. ¿Entonces qué hace Jamboree? Este es un rápido snap de algunas de las cosas que hacemos. Jamboree es un desarrollador de vivienda accesible sin fines de lucro. Hemos estado en el negocio desde 1990. Hemos estado haciendo esto durante mucho tiempo y hemos hecho mucho de ello. Actualmente tenemos casi 8,000 unidades en todo el estado de California. Y hay un par de puntos en este snapshot que me gustaría que echaran un vistazo. Lo más importante en la esquina derecha izquierda, más de 17,000 californianos llaman un desarrollo de Jamboree su hogar. Eso incluye 1,700 seniores, 800 veteranos ya en nuestros desarrollos y 475 personas con necesidades especiales. ¿Entonces cómo lo hacemos? Jamboree tiene una misión de entregar calidad de vivienda accesible y servicios que transformen la vida y fortalecen las comunidades. Y realmente fortalecer las comunidades es uno de los aspectos que estamos mirando específicamente mientras hablamos del desarrollo presupuestal. Esto es algo que va a, creemos, fortalecer el ciudadano de Santa Ana y responder a las necesidades de sus ciudadanos. Jamboree cree que cada persona debería y haría vivir en una comunidad fuerte, saludable y sostenible. Y logramos ello demostrando nuestros valores, que son la calidad. Y si hablas con alguien que ha estado en un desarrollo de Jamboree, ciertamente eso es algo que hablarán de como la calidad. Pero para llegar a ese fin de meta, a ese desarrollo de alta calidad, requiere comunicación, integridad, creatividad y más que el refugio. Y como dije, vamos a hablar específicamente de cómo vamos a llegar allí y espero que estén entusiastos mientras lo pasamos. Pero no gasten todo su entusiasmo en eso porque también vamos a hablar de financiación y números, así que eso será muy emocionante también. Así que Jamboree ofrece soluciones a las ciudades y las ayuda a resolver sus problemas. Las soluciones que ofrecemos actualmente en esta propuesta podemos hacer a partir de nuestro largo historial de desarrollo de vivienda permanente, no solo en el County de Orange sino en todo el estado de California, un número de desarrollos, todos los cuales han sido exitosos. Aunque a lo largo del camino han habido oportunidades de aprendizaje para nosotros y esperamos tomar esas lecciones ganadas y aplicarlas a este desarrollo para que sea exitoso. Como dije, tenemos una relación a largo plazo con el ciudadano de Santa Ana que también ha sido muy exitosa y consideramos esto una continuación de eso. Jamboree es único en la forma en que estamos estructurados, en la forma en que estructuramos nuestros desarrollos y nuestra financiación en que los servicios comunitarios, los servicios que ofrecemos a nuestros residentes, ya sea en un trabajo tradicional, un desarrollo de vivienda laboral o un desarrollo de seniores, pero más particularmente en un entorno de vivienda permanente, los servicios que ofrecemos son tan importantes como el techo que ponemos sobre las cabezas de nuestros residentes. De nuevo, para llegar allí, requiere un número tremendo de recursos, mucho cooperación, mucho comunicación y utilizando esos recursos y esos recursos que son cada vez más escasos, usarlos de una manera creativa y hacer los múltiples programas que son necesarios para poner un desarrollo de esta complejidad y esta escala juntos y hacer esos programas funcionar juntos es algo que Jamboree es especialmente muy bien experimentado y muy bueno. Y de nuevo, el resultado final es el producto de alta calidad de diseño y servicios para nuestros residentes. No creo que alguien asociado con el ciudadano de Santa Ana necesite ser introducido en el profundo problema de la ausencia de vivienda que estamos enfrentando. Y creo que el señor Larson y el señor Haynes hicieron un buen trabajo en la presentación anterior de abordar eso. Y veréis un repetido de algunos de esos números. Me gustaría que se enfocara en la columna central, porque este es el population que estamos hablando de. Los chronicamente homeless, bien, un tipico ciudadano homeless costará todos los servicios combinados aproximadamente 100,000 dólares al año. Los que son chronicamente homeless, que son los más intensos, los 10% más intensos de los ciudadanos afectados costarán servicios por encima de 400,000 dólares al año. Así que vamos a hablar de, como dije, un número tremendo de recursos para hacer esto. Pero representa una inversión, una recompensa y una elección sabia en términos de alojamiento de recursos. Específicamente, esta noche estamos hablando del Budget Inn. El Budget Inn es un motel operativo en el ciudadano de Santa Ana. Lo que intentamos hacer es proporcionar 89 studios completamente furnizados con kitchenettes en cada apartamento para veteranos. Estamos sirviendo, de nuevo, ese rango extremadamente bajo de 30% del ingreso medio del área. En adición, y tan importante como las unidades mismas, estamos proporcionando 4,000 metros cuadrados de clínica y espacio comunitario que creemos que va a ser una plataforma realmente ideal para entregar los servicios. Los estimates actuales, basados en el actual censo en el County de Orange, nos dice que tenemos 405 veteranos sin vivienda en el County de Orange. A riesgo de ser un poco irreverente, creo que eso está profundamente undercontando el número real de veteranos sin vivienda. Esta es una situación de emergencia, una crisis que necesita ser abordada. Y creemos que la gran concentración de 89 unidades va a dar un gran paso hacia abordar ese problema. Mientras hemos pedido 89 vouchers VASH, esos son administrados por los veteranos, por la VA y tenemos actualmente una relación muy exitosa con la VA, como hemos estado trabajando con ellos para desarrollar nuestro hogar de veteranos. De nuevo, es esa relación la que va a hacer este proyecto exitoso y nuestro pasado éxito con ellos y trabajar tanto con la VA y coordinando eso con la ciudad y todos los otros servicios que intentamos traer aquí es la clave para lo que estamos haciendo. Los áreas de servicio comunitario proporcionarán adicional vivibilidad para los residentes. Estamos hablando de estudios. Creemos que son estudios muy espacios, tienen un promedio de 325 metros cuadrados. Y de nuevo, con cocinas, con bañaderos, obviamente, en cada una de esas unidades. Pero proporcionando espacio de cocina adicional para entretenir a los invitados o para comunionarse entre otros residentes y la entrega de servicios, creemos que ese espacio de servicio comunitario es crucial a lo que estamos haciendo. Creemos que al hacer esta conversión de motel en lugar de hacer algo de nueva construcción, mientras que, de nuevo, estamos muy orgullosos del hogar de veteranos y emocionados de que finalmente está rompiendo el terreno, finalmente está rompiendo el terreno y ha sido un esfuerzo multiaños. Con esta entrega, creemos que podemos conseguir unidades online en una forma mucho más rápida sin tener que pasar por todo el rigmarole que tomaría para hacer nueva construcción, construir nuevo. Importante en lo que estamos haciendo, como dije, voy a seguir agarrando la cuerda de los servicios porque es vital a lo que hacemos y importante, tan importante como el real estate mismo. Así que la adaptación de entrenamiento de trabajo y oportunidades económicas de desarrollo para nuestros residentes va a ser un componente clave en eso. Y tan importante como los servicios mismos es cómo estamos pagando por ellos. Ha sido presupuestado como un elemento de encima de la línea, así que antes de que nada más se pague, de la misma forma en que pagamos nuestro basura, nuestro billete eléctrico y nuestro manejo de propiedad, hemos asignado 2,200 dólares por unidad para proporcionar servicios y servicios de supervisión. Así que aquí es lo que estamos hablando. El desarrollo en sí, Budget Inn, como es actualmente conocido, tiene una frontal corta en Harbor Boulevard. Son 89 habitaciones de motel actual. Nuestro intento es no mover paredes y obviamente habrá alguna accommodations para acceso y accesibilidad para nuestros residentes. Pero el huellito de las unidades mismas va a permanecer en su lugar. Aproximadamente la mitad de las unidades existentes ya tiene kitchenettes proporcionadas. Durante el periodo de rehabilitación, proporcionaremos cocinas en todas las demás así como construir, como dije, esos 4,000 metros cuadrados de espacio de clínica y espacio comunitario. Comunidades, excuse me, espacio de servicio comunitario. El diseño que tenemos, lo vamos a abordar, y de nuevo, voy a pedirles a que recuerden esa primera imagen que pidí que miraran, que era el render, cumple con el plan específico que estamos en. Creemos que al proporcionar las porras y el espacio comercial, el espacio de aparición en la frontal, en Harbor se encaja con el plan específico, tanto en letra y espíritu. Y creemos que va a ser una parte importante de hacer nuestro desarrollo una parte de la comunidad y envuelta en la comunidad. Así que este es el lugar en el que estamos. Esto es lo que comenzamos. Y de nuevo, voy a pedirles a que recuerden esa imagen porque es el lugar en el que vamos y va a tomar mucho tiempo para llegar allí. Este es un cambio dramático al exterior del edificio en sí. Y para hacer esto un hogar, esto será un hogar para 89 veteranos sin vivienda y necesita verse más como un hogar que un motel y eso es ciertamente parte de nuestra escala y alcance de nuestra rehabilitación. De nuevo, un poco de vista del exterior así como el lobby existente. Y estas son las unidades. De nuevo, tienen un promedio de 325 metros cuadrados. Se puede ver en la esquina derecha izquierda y un poco en la esquina izquierda izquierda baja que algunos de estos tienen kitchenettes existentes, que son ideales para el tamaño de la unidad que estamos tratando. Prometí emocionamiento sobre los números y ahora estamos en ese punto. Este es, como dije, es un significante rendimiento. El presupuesto total que anticipamos es apenas de 30 millones de dólares. Lugarar los diversos fondos requiere que nos vayamos a muchas diferentes fuentes de financiación para identificar los programas adecuados para traer a bear. Como mencionó Judson en la introducción, pedimos 2 millones de dólares, pero el panel de selección recomendó 1,6 millones de dólares. Eso nos lleva un poco allí. El vehículo principal que estamos usando es el 9% de ingreso bajo de vivienda fiscal. Ese es un proceso competitivo, pero Jamboree tiene una larga historia de éxito en ser asignado 9% de crédito fiscal. Jamboree, en su historia, nunca ha aplicado un alojamiento de 9% que no recibimos en última instancia. 3,3 millones de dólares estará en préstamo. Tenemos una innovación muy, mencioné creatividad al principio también. Cuando se trata de financiación, somos particularmente creativos. Somos muy orgullosos de haber formado una asociación con la Community Foundation de County de Orange para levantar dinero privado, así que no dinero público, pero fondos privados para el desarrollo de vivienda accesible. Y hemos probado que eso funciona, que hay un componente de eso en nuestra capital de hogar de veteranos y estamos propiciando una repetición de eso aquí. Hemos tenido una respuesta entusiasta de la comunidad en apoyar en una forma real financiera el desarrollo de vivienda accesible específicamente para veteranos, pero creo que para toda vivienda accesible en general. Así que eso es parte de eso también. También vamos a seguir tras otro programa estatal, coloquialmente conocido como VIP. Es el programa de vivienda y ausencia de veteranos, también un proceso competitivo. Y cuando empezamos a hablar de horario y línea de tiempo, verán que eso está impulsando una gran parte de lo que nuestra línea de tiempo va a ser. Pero de nuevo, creemos que estamos situando a nosotros mismos en una posición muy competitiva para ser asignado esos 4 millones de dólares. Hay un par de otras piezas, pero esa es la gran mayoría de la capital estructural que estamos hablando. Así que línea de tiempo, líneas de tiempo, como seguro que saben, en el desarrollo de vivienda accesible son impulsadas en gran parte por los ciclos de financiación de nuestros fuentes de capital. Porque vamos tras dos programas competitivos, tenemos que hacerlos en secuencia. Así que nuestra primera aplicación estará en junio para ese programa VIP. Cuando estemos exitosos con eso, entonces iremos a la competencia de 9% de crédito fiscal. Anticipamos que eso sucederá en la primera parte de 2020. Cuando se nos asigne eso, eso se asignará en mayo de 2020 y comenzaremos la construcción justo después del primer año, en enero de 2021. Anticipamos un rehabilitación de 11 a 12 meses y tendremos a los residentes moviéndose, con suerte, a Christmas de 2021. De nuevo, dije que voy a seguir volviendo a la idea de servicios y dentro de Jamboree, referimos a los servicios como impacto comunitario. Y como mencioné antes, la forma en que Jamboree estructura nuestros servicios residentes es única dentro de la industria y la forma en que lo colocamos en la frente y es una prioridad financieramente. Esto nos ha permitido construir un programa muy robusto y un equipo muy fuerte y dedicado de miembros de impacto comunitario que entregan estos servicios. Y tan importante, en particular cuando estamos hablando de trabajar con programas como la VA, supervisando la entrega de servicios. Y porque tendremos múltiples proveedores de servicios, asegurándonos de que todos esos proveedores de servicios están trabajando juntos y comunicando y cooperando. Especialmente en Budget Inn, porque estamos desarrollando esta plataforma de entrega de servicios en esos 4,000 metros cuadrados de espacio comunitario y clínico, dentro del espacio clínico esperamos estar abordando tanto la salud física y la salud mental dentro de ese espacio como los servicios más tradicionales que ofreceríamos a esta población. De nuevo, estaré trabajando con la VA, les proporcionaré gestión de casos y eso será supervisado muy intimamente por miembros del personal de Jamboree. Creemos, hemos visto con este modelo de entrega, trabajando cooperativamente con la supervisión de Jamboree la retención de los residentes mayor de 90% durante dos años. Así que eso significa que el 90% de nuestros residentes quedará alojados. Así que quiero agradecerles, pero también quiero dejarles un último mensaje. Mientras miramos estos cuatro desarrollos, he pintado muchos imágenes y he hablado mucho de los números y esto es una propuesta. Pero esto es algo que no somos nuevos, esto es algo que Jamboree ha estado haciendo durante diez años y lo hemos hecho exitosamente, una y otra y otra vez, en todo el County de Orange, en todo el estado de California. Todos estos desarrollos son extremadamente diferentes, todos incluyen vivienda permanente y todos han sido muy exitosos en proporcionar casas y servicios para nuestros residentes. Así que gracias de nuevo por su tiempo y ciertamente lo apreciamos.
Gracias. Puedo solo esperar un momento rápido. Vamos a empezar a nuestro derecho con el comisionado Tardif.
Sí, solo quería preguntar, el motel existente, el Budget Inn, ¿es un motel operativo en ese momento?
Está actualmente operando, sí.
OK. Parece que ha tenido sus mejores días. No sé si está causando problemas para los servicios policiales ahora.
Sí, creo que eso es correcto. Esa es una de las formas en que estamos emocionados por la idea de la conversión de motel es abordar esos problemas y también proporcionar soluciones y nuevas oportunidades. Y sí, tal vez los mejores días están detrás de él, pero sus mejores días están en frente de él.
Sí, bien. Sí, creo que es un buen uso de ello. Gracias.
Comisionado Frazier. Lo siento, comisionado Vázquez. Lo siento. Gracias. Comisionado Frazier.
Gracias.
Lo siento. Estoy hablando con el comisionado García.
Gracias por la presentación. Solo quiero recomendarles todos sus proyectos, tienen una buena reputación en la comunidad y parece que va a ser una oportunidad.
Muchas gracias.
Solo tenía una pregunta. ¿Puede describir qué es la definición de McKinney-Vento?
Puedo, pero en realidad voy a preguntar a Natalie Reader, quien es nuestra directora de impacto comunitario, porque ella podrá hacerlo más precisamente y elegantemente de lo que yo.
Y lo escribí. Gracias. La definición de McKinney-Vento se usa en las escuelas y la definición es uno de la ausencia de vivienda que hablaremos de individuos que carecen de residencia regular y adecuada a la hora de la noche. Y esto incluye vivienda compartida, refugios, motels, hoteles, campos de recreo, trailers así como áreas públicas denominadas substandard. Así que esto podría ser alguien que está completamente sin refugio y sin vivienda o alguien que está experimentando una situación inestable que está bajo esa definición de McKinney-Vento. Así que esa es la misma definición que se usa con los vouchers VASH aquí. So that's the same definition that gets used with the VASH vouchers here.
Thank you. So the eighty-nine units is solely for veterans, correct?
That's our intent, yes. Just to provide a little bit of a caveat to that, as I mentioned, a couple of our, the programs that we're going after are competitive. And also with the funding cycles a little bit far out, the timeline is stretched out a little further than we would like. We are working, we're continuing to work on a number of creative financing measures, one of which would involve a private sector partner coming in and making a very, very significant capital contribution. In that case, we've, and we've discussed this with Mr. Brown a little bit, is it possible with that sort of creative financing that we would peel back some small number, some small portion of those units for the use for this large capital contributor? So again, that's just, it's not our main plan, but it's one of the plans that we have in the back of our minds if we're not successful in the competitive environment.
If that were the case, would the AMI change, or would it still stay the same?
No, we would still aim for the same AMI.
Which is thirty percent?
Thirty percent, extremely low.
Okay. Okay, awesome. Last, anyone have any questions for city staff? Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? If so, you may fill out the request to speak form with the Recording Secretary. You have three minutes to speak. Also, we will not accept any additional requests to speak cards once we begin the public comment session. If you have not already done so, please give us your form to Recording Secretary. Awesome. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Do we have a motion to approve item five?
I'd make a motion to...
One second. Thank you. Cupa de Traducción?
Perdón?
Same. Sí, voy a comenzar.
Se me hizo muy interesante. Bueno, primero, a que nada, estoy muy sorprendida de esta junta. Esta primera vez que asisto, y los felicito por las decisiones al pensar en los residentes que necesitamos vivienda en la Ciudad de Santana. Pero me levanté ahora porque escuché la palabra McKinney-Vento. Y cuando decimos McKinney-Vento estamos hablando de los niños que están al borde o situación de calle en el distrito escolar. Y cuando venimos aquí en el mes de octubre para entregar las firmas de control de renta que estuvimos trabajando, que no podíamos alcanzar nuestra meta simplemente por cuatrocientas firmas que nos faltaron, pensábamos en todos estos niños. Y en ese mes de octubre eran cinco mil novecientos dos niños que estaban en situación de calle. Y ahora, hasta el día de ayer, hasta el día lunes que tuvimos nuestra junta en el distrito, ese número aumentó, sesenta niños más. Estamos hablando de cinco mil novecientos sesenta y uno niños que están en situación de homeland, en situación de calle. So cuando ustedes están hablando de un proyecto como el de Jamboree, me da gusto que piensen en toda esa comunidad que no tiene un hogar, pero también es muy importante pensar en los niños, porque están hablando de beneficiar a los veteranos. Y no tengo absolutamente nada en contra de ellos, pero pienso que también nuestro futuro o el futuro de nuestra nación, pensando en los niños, consideren nada más, tenganlo en mente. No sé si varios de ustedes han sido estudiantes, y no sé cuáles fueron su situación de vivienda, pero piensen en sus familias, piensen en todos estos estudiantes que merecen vivir en una vida, en una vivienda digna. So eso es lo que quiero comentar, so gracias.
Gracias, Italia.
It's very interesting that you're talking about this point. And first of all, I want to say it's my first time to come to this meeting, and I want to congratulate you on bringing this topic and thinking of the residents, especially the homeless residents in Santa Ana. And it was mentioned McKinney-Vento here, that's why it caught my attention, because McKinney-Vento talks about kids who are homeless or about to become homeless in our schools. And in October, we brought some signatures, when we talked about, we brought the measure for rent control. We missed the deadline, or missed the number by four hundred signatures, and so we did make it, but we brought this information. And at that time, the count was five thousand nine hundred and two homeless students. And last Monday, we had a meeting at the school district, and that number had already increased from then to now. And now we have five thousand nine hundred and sixty-one homeless students or students who are facing homelessness. So it's important for you to, that you, so it's good that we hear of this project, the Jamboree project, and it's good that you're thinking of the community, and you're thinking of the veterans. But what about the kids? The kids also need this information, this service. It's important, of course, I have nothing against the veterans, but we need to think of the kids as well, think of, because they are the future of our community. So I'd like to think of the kids, and the kids that are living in this situation, and the kids need, desperately need dignified housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Cesar. Do you have a motion to approve item five?
I'll make a motion to approve item five, the pre-loan commitment of one million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand and forty-seven dollars of affordable housing funds and eighty-nine project-based vouchers to Jamboree Housing for the Budget Inn Project Strategic Plan Number Five, Three C, according to the recommended actions listed here, one and two of the staff. That's my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Can I get a second?
One second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All those in favor say aye.
Can we have a little discussion, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Chair Santana?
Vice.
Vice Chair Santana?
Thank you. Yes.
To address the question of the lady, the resident, how do we balance the amount that we expend for residents of the family compared to, or family residents of the city compared to, like, homeless residents and, say, veterans? How do you balance that? Judson?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Tardif, for that question. So the source of funds here is what's dictating the type of resident being served at this project. The city Housing Authority and Housing Authority made available one hundred HUD-VASH project-based vouchers in this RFP. Those HUD-VASH project-based vouchers were awarded by HUD to our Housing Authority in May of two thousand eighteen, so April or May of this past year. And then we were, once we received the award, we were able to make them available in the You know, that is, we had one project, we had this project and developer apply for those HUD-VASH vouchers, and another project applied for those HUD-VASH vouchers. I'm trying to get to your question, though. So again, the type of source of financing being used to develop this project are the HUD-VASH vouchers. And in terms of the allocation of those limited resources across the various projects that are being proposed today, the review panel sought to maximize the impact of those resources, diversify the type of affordable housing being provided. So if we've looked at the project so far, we have two ownership units that were approved by the Commission for Habitat for Humanity, for large families, three and four better ownership units. We have eleven units of permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals, local Santa Ana residents at the deepest affordability level. And in this project, we'll have eighty-nine units for homeless veterans, qualified, knowledgeable, local Santa Ana homeless veterans. The next project you'll see will have ninety-three units across various income levels, with the majority of those units for families at thirty percent AMI. And so, in terms of, in terms of the sources of funds that were being made available on the RFP, and the projects that are being recommended, the panel sought to maximize the impact of those funds, diversify the type of units that are being provided, and best meet the needs of the community of Santa Ana and the wishes of the City Council.
Thank you.
We go for a vote, right? So all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any opposed? Nope, item passes five-zero. The fourth item on the business calendar is item number six, to approve the pre-commitment of three million one hundred seventy thousand five hundred forty-seven of affordable housing funds and eight project-based vouchers to National Community Renaissance and Mercy House for the development of the Santa Ana United Methodist Church project. Will staff please report on this matter?
Yes, thank you very much, Vice Chair Tardif. It is my privilege to invite National Community Renaissance and Mercy House Living Centers to the podium to present their project. The developer requested three point three million dollars and twenty-two project-based vouchers for, to develop their project. The review panel, after reviewing their proposals, as well as the competing proposals, is recommending an award of three million one hundred seventy thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and eight project-based vouchers. I do want to note at the beginning that this developer is pursuing a source of funds that they'll go into more detail about called the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant Funds. And they are intending to try and bring in several million dollars for their project, as well as several million dollars in public improvements surrounding their project. And the deadline for that grant application is on February eleventh, which is, in terms of the expediency of this project being considered by the Commission, as well as by City Council, is important related to that deadline. So my privilege to introduce the developer and the development team.
A good evening again. My name is Larry Haynes. I'm the Executive Director of Mercy House. I'm going to make just a few opening remarks, and then I'm going to turn the PowerPoint slide over to my colleague Alexa Washburn, who'll walk through some of the more details of the project. I wanted to take just a few seconds up front to talk about Mercy House and talk about some of the special relationships that are part of this project, that I think are somewhat unique. I didn't talk a ton about Mercy House last time, but a couple of data points that I think are somewhat interesting, especially as we are talking about a permanent housing project of such size. For Mercy House alone, between the projects that we operate, that we develop, as well as those that we literally take off the streets and put into housing every single year, we place about fifteen hundred people into permanent housing every single year. That's fifteen hundred people that, when the year started, might have been homeless and are now fully housed. And I might say it is highly successful. Even in our projects that serve the most vulnerable, those in permanent supportive housing, we just did some research as a staff. Over the last five years, in total of five years, of those that we have housed over the last five years, only four point two-six percent, so less than five percent, have returned to homelessness in a five-year span. It's really quite incredible what the success rate has been. In addition to that, we provide shelter throughout the county for somewhere between twenty-five hundred to three thousand people. A little-known fact about Mercy House is that actually when it comes to family shelter, we are the largest provider of shelter for families in the county of Orange. And I know there's been a lot of conversation this evening about the importance of taking care of families, and we quite agree. Some things that are unique to this project are some of the relationships. As I mentioned earlier, Mercy House was birthed here in Santa Ana. I've been its original employee, and we have been heavily involved with the partners that are here before you, in particular, the United Methodist Church. Over the years, Mercy House has been actively involved in the neighborhood associations of French Court, as well as Historic French Park. We've actually been board members of both those groups, and have been the host for Historic French Park and our Emmanuel House residents over the last several years. We really believe in engaging the neighborhood in a way that is completely holistic. We have several projects on tap with National Corps, from whom you'll hear more about today. And with United Methodist Church, we have a history that goes back all the way to the nineteen nineties. I don't know if you know this or not, but one of the first homeless access centers in the entire county was a project that we did with United Methodist Church at this very location. Another little-known fact is that we've also been the operator for the last ten years of the Armory, and when the Armory has had to have Dark Knights, or when we had to have an emergency place to place families in our Family Redirection Program, for years, it has actually been at this location with these partners. There is a lot of synergy that goes into this. We believe that these are some special relationships. We believe that we have a project to present to you, that in both design and in relationships, is a unique fit for the surrounding neighbors. We've heard comments tonight, also concerns not simply about homeless individuals that we want to serve, but we also want larger units that will serve families as well. You are about to see all of that tonight. I'm going to turn this over to Alexa, but I will be happy to answer any questions you might have when our presentation is over.
Well, thank you, Larry. Well, good evening, Honorable Co-Chair and Commissioners. My name's Alexa Washburn. I'm Vice President of Planning with National Community Renaissance, who are often known as National Corps. I also grew up in Santa Ana. I spent the first eighteen years of my life here, grew up in a home right on French Street. In fact, my parents still live in the house I grew up in. So this project is particularly, hits home for me on a personal level, but also a professional level. So I want to tell you a little bit about National Community Renaissance, or National Corps, in case you haven't heard of us. We, we're celebrating our twenty-sixth year in business, and over those twenty-six years, we have developed a portfolio of where we own and operate over nine thousand affordable housing units. Seven thousand of those units are located right here in Southern California. And those units provide homes, homes to over twenty-seven thousand low-income individuals and families. And this makes us one of the largest nonprofit affordable housing developers in the nation. But we're much more than that. What makes us quite unique is that we are a full-service, vertically-integrated organization. So we have our in-house acquisitions team, in-house planning that does our entitlements and environmental approvals. We have our general contractors, our construction division. We build all of our communities, and then we are invested in them for the long term through our property management division. So we manage and operate our communities. And because affordable housing is very complicated and requires a lot of checks and balances, we also have our own in-house compliance division, asset management, and what I would say most importantly, we have our own supportive services division. Our supportive services are provided directly onsite to our residents through our Hope Through Housing Foundation. These are just images of a few of our local projects here in Orange County, LA, and Northern San Diego. You can see we take pride in the high-quality materials, the design, and the maintenance of these beautiful stellar properties. You already heard about Mercy House, you know, you're very familiar with Larry and his team. They are an anchor already within this neighborhood, and will be the primary service provider for our permanent supportive housing units. So let's talk about development objectives. When the Santa Ana United Methodist Church, they went through a competitive request for proposal process themselves. So not only did we have to go through the city RFP process, but we also went through the church RFP process to be, for them to select the right development partner. You know, this is a long-term partnership, and so they ultimately selected National Corps and Mercy House. And so together with the church, we developed these five objectives, and we wanted this community to first and foremost, address a community need. That's the need of a significant and increasing need for affordable housing within the city of Santa Ana, but also to meet the city's priorities and balance those needs. That's a priority for large, affordable family units. You'll see that over sixty, seventy percent of our projects are two- and three-bedroom units, available to families at zero to sixty percent AMI. That's extremely low income and up to low income. But also to balance the priority of addressing the homeless. So we have thirty-five percent of our total units that are also set aside for permanent supportive housing. So this, I think, meets your questions about how we balance those needs, and I think you'll see that in this project. The second objective is to provide tailored supportive services onsite. Through Mercy House, as well as National Corps, Hope Through Housing Foundation, we will be providing supportive services tailored and structured to the individual needs of our families and our residents onsite. Those services are also available to the broader community and neighborhood, and we have a community center onsite that will operate those services and those programs. Third is neighborhood compatibility. We, you'll see the design, the high-quality design, and the amenities that we've incorporated into this project are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and that was very important. important to us, especially as we got out to meet with the various groups in the neighborhood. Fourth is sustainability, and I mean this beyond just environmental-friendly buildings, but also the financial sustainability of the project. And then lastly is for this community, this affordable housing community, to serve as an anchor. The United Methodist Church has been in this neighborhood and in this city for over a hundred years. And this site, they want it to, they're consolidating their ministries on their north campus, on North Grand in Santa Ana, which then frees up this space, this site, for an anchor and a legacy for the United Methodist Church to serve the community by providing high-quality affordable housing and supportive services. And so this will be an anchor in the community. So talk about location. We could not get a more ideal location. This project is bounded on the south by Santa Ana Boulevard, on the north by Civic Center, on the west by Spurgeon, and on the east by French Street. It's located along a future OC Streetcar stop, so the future OC Streetcar trolley, which is currently under construction, is going to roll down Santa Ana Boulevard. There is a stop planned directly at our southeast corner. So literally our residents will be steps away from the OC Streetcar. Secondly, it's within less than a mile from the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center, where we've got MetroLink, Amtrak, bus service, and so forth. It's also walkable to retail and services along Fourth Street and Main Street, and it's within a half-mile of where we stand today, which is a major employment center in terms of the city, county, as well as services. There's also a high density already of existing low, excuse me, low-to-moderate income households within the neighborhood, which really speaks to the need for this type of community and development. And then lastly is a walk score of ninety-eight. I mean, this is almost a one-hundred percent walk score, meaning that you can conduct most of your errands by walking. We started outreach on this project about a year ago or over a year ago, and we've held over a half dozen meetings on the church site on Sundays, you know, right after church, so with the congregation, but also the broader public. We've also reached out and have met with community groups within the neighborhood. We also coordinated with the city and Garfield Elementary School a walk audit, and we conducted this back in October, and many of the parents participated, and I see a few in the audience, in this walk audit to identify safe routes from our project to Garfield Elementary School, which will be serving the students and the children within our development. As Justin had pointed out, one of the funding sources that we are seeking, about three million dollars will be used as community benefits to improve safe routes to schools. So whether that's pedestrian walkways, bike routes, improving the bus stops, you know, the bus shelters, so about three million dollars will be used to enhance the infrastructure and the path of travel around our project. So project summary, here we go to unveil it. It is ninety-three units on one point seven-four acres. It will consist of one four-story building, and it's surrounded on the perimeter with two-story townhomes. Overall, there's thirty-one bedroom units, forty-one two-bedroom units, and twenty-two three-bedroom units. In addition, there's one three-bedroom exempt manager's unit. The project is one hundred percent affordable, and this actually should say affordable to individuals and families making zero to sixty percent AMI, because there are a portion of the units that are set aside for the homeless. You'll see substantial community amenities. In fact, at the request of the city, we have incorporated about seventy-five hundred, seventy-two hundred square feet of ground-floor non-residential flex space along Santa Ana Boulevard. So this can be for professional office, retail, community space, really meant to activate Santa Ana Boulevard and be oriented to the OC Streetcar. We've also incorporated a totlot playground, a twenty-seven hundred square foot community center, lobby and lounge area, mini outdoor landscaped courtyards, barbecue areas, and there's laundry facilities on each floor. We've also provided a hundred and two enclosed parking spaces. So here's a picture of the site plan. The image on the right is the ground-floor site plan. So the hot pink is that seventy-two hundred square feet of non-residential flex space along Santa Ana Boulevard. And then the teal or the blue units along the perimeter, French and Spurgeon, are the two-story two- and three-bedroom townhomes. Those have been placed specifically to screen the parking garage that lies in the center of the project, so you don't see the parking. Access to the project, in and out, ingress and ingress, will be from French Street. The image on the left is what we call the podium deck or the second level. From here, there'll be a grand staircase from Santa Ana Boulevard up onto the podium deck. You'll see in the center, that yellow building, that's the twenty-seven hundred square foot community center. And then it's surrounded, you have a large open space courtyard that we've programmed. You'll see the landscape site plan, kind of a totlot up towards Santa Ana, Civic Center Boulevard, and then a mixture of one, two, and three bedrooms surrounding the courtyard. This repeats itself on the third and fourth floor. Here's a nice image of the transit-oriented design. This is the corner of Santa Ana Boulevard and French Street, the exact corner where we will have the future OC Streetcar Transit Station. You'll see that we've used a modern contemporary architecture along Santa Ana Boulevard. But as you turn the corner onto Spurgeon and French Street, you see a more Mission Revival architectural style, and this was purposely done. This was done to transition more from the activated street fundage along Santa Ana Boulevard to the more neighborhood feeling along French and Spurgeon Street. Remember, that's where your two-story townhomes are. This also mirrors the Mission Revival architecture that you see across the street, across Spurgeon at the post office, and across French at the Ebel Club. This is a nice bird's-eye view of the entire project. You'll see it takes up almost an entire block. Another thing about the two different architectural styles is that it breaks up the massing of this large project that, again, takes up almost an entire block. So you see how it fits nicely into the fabric of the neighborhood. Here's a picture of the landscape plan, again, just emphasizing the substantial amount of community amenities that we're providing on the project. There's kind of little nooks and crannies where you can have some private quiet time, or I call it passive open space, but there's also active open space areas such as the totlot playground, the area in front of the community center. The community center will actually have doors that kind of open up into the courtyard so we can really use that inside and outside of the space. So this is the table for the affordability and unit mix, and I want to bring your attention to this because as we started, we really responded to the community and some of the comments that we heard, specifically at the Sunshine Ordinance Meeting that was held in November. What we were able to do is, number one, make this project entirely affordable. So again, it's one hundred percent affordable. We were also able to adjust the previous affordability mix by adding five three-bedroom and three two-bedroom units, so those are larger units, at thirty percent of the area median income, so this is extremely low income. So we now have a total of thirty-eight units at thirty percent AMI. We have six units at forty percent AMI, two bedrooms, and then twenty-two bedrooms and eleven three-bedrooms at fifty percent AMI, and twelve two-bedrooms and five three-bedrooms at sixty percent AMI. So you really see a nice balance. We were able to respond to the community, balance the city's priorities of large affordable family as well as permanent supportive housing, and also balance the church's priorities. You know, the church's priorities, they're our partner in this development. So I feel that this is the best balance and mix of affordability as well as bedroom and unit size. In terms of financing, we are able to leverage the city's three point one seven million to finance a forty-six million dollar project. We'll do this largely with the ASIC funding that we will be applying for, that's the twenty million, the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant, which the application is due in February, and we'll also leverage that with four percent tax credits. In terms of schedule, again, what is largely driving this schedule is that application deadline of February eleventh for the ASIC funding. And so we expect to have our project entitled by, actually, it goes to council on February fifth, apply for the ASIC funding in February. ASIC's awards are awarded in June. We would then apply for four percent tax credits in July, August, which brings us to start a construction in January twenty twenty. Okay, that's a year from now, with a grand opening in summer of twenty twenty-one. So we're moving quick on this project because we want to deliver, rapidly deliver, the needed affordable units for the city. Lastly, just want to leave you with both National Community Renaissance, Mercy House, our nonprofit community development organizations. We specialize in building and managing high-quality affordable housing paired with best-practice services, and our partner throughout this effort has been the Santa Ana United Methodist Church. We have many representatives from the church here tonight, as well as the entire team, to answer any questions that you might have. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Alexa. And I just want to add two things, Commissioner, that, one, we want to express our sincere appreciation to the church for issuing the RFP for affordable housing on their site. There are limited sites for affordable housing development in Santa Ana for our residents, and that partnership of the United Methodist Church congregation making their site available is a huge benefit to our community, a huge contribution to our efforts to serve our community, and we express sincere appreciation for the congregation and for the leaders of that church. And I also want to add that our former Executive Director, Pat Whitaker, is here as a consultant for this project, and she's also available to answer any questions regarding this project.
Thank you.
Does the Commission have any questions for staff? I'll start to my right. Commissioner Vasquez?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Tardif?
Looks like a great, really great project. Thank you for working with our staff and bringing it to our city. What is your family name, living on French Street, Alexa? I was just wondering if I knew because my family grew up there.
Washburn, W-A-S-H-B-U-R-N.
Okay, great. What hundred block did you live on?
I lived on the twenty-five-hundred block, so North French Street.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Commissioner Frazier?
I want to get that question.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very thoughtful, I appreciate that. And it looks like a huge development. How is, just kind of relating it to other developments that pop in around town like D'yuco and Santiago, and you have that seventy-five, seventy-five hundred square feet of space?
Yes.
How are those, I don't know if those are a new thing that you guys are implementing in the designs or not, but how are those working out as far as filling up those spaces and the same?
That's actually a very good question. One of the first things we did to help inform the project is a market study, and currently there is not a market for retail, and that's largely because retail likes to locate next to other retail. And your major retail corridors right now are Fourth Street and Main Street. Now, however, once the OC Streetcar starts operating, that is likely to change. And so in the near term, that space will most likely be occupied as office space. In fact, Mercy House and National Corps both need office space, additional office space, so we will gladly locate there and continue to seek a tenant so when the market is ready, when there is a market for retail, then it would transition to that. So it's been designed to be flexible.
And I just have a question about the ground lease, maybe I don't understand what this one is. So the church will maintain the ground lease for X amount of a period of time?
Correct.
I'm sorry, Chair. We can't hear back here, can we? Put the microphone closer.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
So the church will maintain the ground lease for X amount of years. What happens to the property after that ground lease? Is there some type of contingency to renew that?
Correct, there is. There is, yeah. So it's a minimum sixty-five years. We've actually executed a development agreement that sets that first term, but there are options to extend the lease.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm really intrigued by the different architectural designs that you're going to incorporate into these buildings. You might have mentioned, but I don't remember, how did you come about that, or why?
Sure. It was really a mixture of input from the public, the congregation, as well as the community. We couldn't, we kind of did a study of the various architectural styles within the surrounding area, and, you know, you really have a mix, right? You know, from Craftsman to the Mission Revival to some more of the contemporary along Fourth Street. And then we talked about how large the project is, you know, it takes up an entire block. And so, you know, it was hard to decide on just one, and it really made sense then to utilize two. And so because Santa Ana Boulevard is going to become a very activated corridor with the transit coming, it made sense to do more of a contemporary there. And then as you turn onto French and Spurgeon, you have the tree-lined streets, and that's where those two-bedroom townhomes are to really provide that, you know, stoop-style, you know, direct access, and that made sense to do a more residential feel. So it was actually, you know, the church congregation, the community that kind of came up with the different styles couldn't decide on one, and it made sense to use two. And I think it turned out very nicely.
Thank you.
Awesome. I just had a couple of questions. The first one was the ground lease, so it is set at sixty-five?
Yes.
Minimum?
Correct.
Perfect. The second question was parking. I understand with Assembly Bill six, is it six-five-five? That, oh, Assembly Bill seven-four-four, which allows developers to, so with the train that's passing through that corridor, it pretty much alleviates the city's requirements for parking spaces, is that correct?
It doesn't completely eliminate the requirements, but the state bill that you're referring to essentially makes it so that if there's a hundred percent affordability provided by the developer, then it reduces the amount of parking required, so long as it's within a half-mile of a transit location, which this location absolutely is. So it does reduce the amount of parking that is required for the project.
Awesome, thank you. And so I see that, aside from that, we're also losing sixteen more parking spaces due to six electrical vehicle spaces, five regular spaces, two for reserved large vans, and other accessible, five for accessible vans. So that's all factored in, right?
Correct, yes. We still have, I don't know if that's a question for the attorney or myself, but we still have to comply with ADA as well as the Cal Green Building Code, so that's where you're getting, the Cal Green requires electric vehicle spaces. The ADA, you know, is compliant with those rules.
I have friends who live in that area, and I know that parking is very scarce, and even with the new transit that we're going to be, it takes time to build, so would there be additional stalls, or would the developer be open to helping residents find parking?
Yeah, so we're managing parking in two ways. So, well, so the city has their requirements. This project lies within the transit zoning code, so the city has already, has been very progressive in adopting reduced parking requirements for areas like this that are located along transit lines in combination with AB seven forty-four. But we're also, through our funding, our ASIC funding, we will be providing each of the units with a minimum three-year transit pass. Okay, so that's one way to encourage or incentivize the residents to switch their mode of travel from the automobile or single occupancy. from the automobile or single occupancy vehicle to transit. We're also, again...
Not thinking it's a transit, that transit's only going to take you to Costa Mesa or Anaheim, Gordon Grove.
Yeah, or also, though, you can use the Transit Center, where you've got those connections to MetroLink, Amtrak, you know, just is less than, is about a half-mile away. So that's what those passes are for. In addition, we have bike parking, and we'll be having a bike program, so again, to kind of educate the residents and encourage them to use biking. As part of our ASIC funding, we've set aside about $3 million to do those mobility improvements I talked about, to create a safer walking environment, biking environment, and also enhance the transit in the area. And then thirdly, you know, we manage all of our communities. And so we conduct and prepare parking management plans specifically for each project, but we also conduct our own parking studies, because the parking utilization studies, because we want to know as developers and operators, how much of the parking is being used? Is it all being used? Is it underparked? Is it overparked? And what we have found for our transit-oriented developments with this type of unit mix, that actually the number of spaces that we are providing is sufficient. So kind of coupling it, you know, in two ways, through incentivizing, encouraging non-automobile, and then through a parking management plan. Also keep in mind, we have the 31-bedroom PSH units. I mean, I think as Larry had explained before, it's very common for the homeless individuals not to own a car. So that's already 30 of the units right there. So really, the parking is for the two- and three-bedroom units.
Right.
The families.
Right, that's the, okay, perfect. And so I was going to move on to that question, which was, there's 22 units for, wait a second, for the project-based vouchers housing, is that correct? Out of the 93?
Actually, Vice Chair, that was, the request from the developer was for 22 project-based vouchers, but the review panel is only recommending eight.
Okay, so can you walk me back on that?
So the developer requested $3.3 million and 22 project-based vouchers to finance their project, and the review panel, with the limited resources available, is only recommending $3,170,000 and eight project-based vouchers, so not the full 22.
Okay. And why the drop, high drop?
So the panel only had 100, there's two things, okay? The panel only had 100 project-based vouchers to allocate, so 89 were allocated to the budget-in project, three to the homemade project, and then eight to this project. One reason why the panel recommended eight is because if you have more than eight project-based vouchers on a project, it triggers Davis Bacon wages, which would substantially increase the developer's construction costs.
One second. I think we'll come back to it. Would any other commissioner would like to speak while I look at my notes?
Yeah, actually, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Frazier, please.
In addition to the eight vouchers, since that is a decrease in the vouchers that were originally requested, are other vouchers allowed, are traditional Section 8 vouchers accepted at the property as well?
Well, we are pursuing additional vouchers through the County of Orange. So currently, eight of the 33 PSH units would be the VASH vouchers, right, the Veterans Units. And actually, what this does then is it opens up, then provides 25 of the PSH units for a large, the larger homeless population, but we are seeking additional vouchers through the County of Orange.
So if you get those vouchers from the County of Orange in addition to these eight vouchers, will that preclude you from accepting other additional Section 8 voucher tenants?
No, it will not, and I, yeah, I want to clarify that, yeah, no, I mean, we would happily...
Vouchers for any unit?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think Frazier kind of touched what I'm trying to get at. Thank you for the clarification. And for the, I know the county, because there's so many shelters that are opening up, and there's just a lot of, maybe I gotta, maybe I'll come back to address the city staff separately. Okay, that being said, at this point, would, so is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this matter? If so, you may fill out a request to speak form with the recording secretary. You have three minutes to speak. Also, we will not accept any additional request to speak cards once we begin the public comment session. If you haven't already done so, please give your form to the recording secretary. Anyone else? Nope, seeing none. Can we please have Albert Castillo, please come forward? Idalia Second, and Eduardo Cortez Third.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On this project here, I don't see anything that says that this is for residents of Santa Ana. I see on the other ones, the past developers did have a, or did say that they were being built for the residents of Santa Ana, and on this one, I don't see anything on that list. I'm mistaken, but I would add that to the part of the deal here. And also, if you look on, oh, let's see, on my book right here, page 510, on 1B3, this is proof that the individual resides on property zone for residential use in Santa Ana. It does not give you a day, a year. I mean, somebody could move in and then apply for one day, a week, or month, but we should have a limit that should say lives here for a year. I think that should be added to that, and to all the other that want to put on the resides in Santa Ana. Also, I see there that the developer is also saying that this is built for Santa Ana, but on here, as you look, on the 30%, there's a very few units for residents of Santa Ana, which would be on the, can I look at that on the board there, please? On the, how many are? Are for residents, or how many, 30, here it is, right here. I got it right here. Yeah, that one right there. Okay, so we're saying for three-bedroom, it's five. When we have a lot of residents here in Santa Ana that do need three-bedrooms units, why is there only a very low amount of bedroom that are built for the residents of Santa Ana? That's another question I wish the commissioners would ask, and I thank Tardif for asking those questions that residents are asking. And as commissioners, I wish you asked more questions. I don't know all your rest of you, but these are important questions, because when you start seeing all these units being built in our city, and I don't like all these units being built in our city, because we're crowded already, but, you know, but what I do see when you're building for the residents, I see them building more quality homes for the residents, but you start building homes that are not for our city, then you get more people in here. As you drive into our city, or you drive around our city, you see the traffic here. We're crowded, overcrowded. In the 80s, they built so many homes here. And this is a start, this happened in the 80s. I'm seeing this again, and these years are coming. And when you guys don't ask questions, why are we getting so many units here? Because infrastructure, we got over 100 years of infrastructure that's water, sewer, and so on. If you don't care about that, well, care about when you drive around our city, how much traffic there is, and so on. So when you build for the residents of Santa Ana, you're building for people that actually live here, not for people that are coming more into our city. So think about that as commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo.
Vice Chair, Tardif, if I may, provide some information for the edification of the commission, as well as members of the public. Under page 16 of the Affordable Housing Funds Policies and Procedures that were adopted by the commission in October 2017, and then adopted by City Council in March 2018, there is a local residency preference for residents of Santa Ana. So any affordable housing project that is supported funds by the commission will have a requirement to serve local Santa Ana residents.
Thank you. Ms. Rios?
Una vez más, gracias por su trabajo. Quisiera decirle a todas las personas que trabajaron en ese proyecto, darles gracias porque tiene razón. Sí nos tomaron nuestra información como grupo comunitario, como vela, y también nos tomaron nuestra opinión como padres de la escuela Garfield, que está ahí también cerca del área. So crédito a quien no merece, ¿verdad? So en ese aspecto, sí tomaron nuestra opinión. Y me agrada cuando todo esto se trae a la mesa y se hablan de números, pero a veces hace falta confirmar los ingresos de estas familias que vivimos ahí. Y cuando digo ingresos, estamos hablando que son familias de extremadamente bajos recursos. Extremadamente bajos recursos, pero al final del día tenemos que pagar el 80%, 90% de nuestros ingresos en la renta. Entonces, cuando hay proyectos así, hay una luz de esperanza para todas estas familias. Lo que pasa cuando estos, cuando esos proyectos son terminados, es que las familias de esa misma comunidad no se ven beneficiadas, porque sus ingresos no califican para esto. Entonces, en esta misma página están diciendo 30 unidades de una recámara son para personas, una vez más, para personas sin hogar, y sabemos que hay familias que son miembros, hasta ocho personas viven en una sola recámara. Entonces, sí puede ser una diferencia si vivieran en un apartamento de una recámara, pero sabemos que también hay ciertas reglas que no permitirían eso. Entonces, para que esta foto sea perfecta, vengo a pedirles que pongan más apartamentos de dos recámaras, más de tres recámaras, con el 30% de AMI, porque, por ejemplo, de dos recámaras solamente tenemos tres. De tres recámaras tenemos cero. Son básicamente familias, se van a ver tres beneficiadas. Y si estamos hablando de casi 6,000 niños en el sitio escolar que no tienen hogar, eso no va a ser la gran solución. Va a ayudar a unas familias, pero podemos ayudar a más todavía si pedimos más apartamentos de dos, tres recámaras, al 30%, 40%. Pónganlas al 50%, pero al 60%, pues como, si de verdad queremos hacer cambios, que se vean esos cambios. Agradezco a la ciudad, y si la ciudad puede también jugar esos números, pedimos que piensen en los residentes y hagan que esto realmente sea un beneficio para todos. Gracias.
Gracias, Ms. Rios.
Thank you again, and thank you for the work that you are doing. And I'm here to talk about this project, and thank you for all you do, and for listening, listening to the community, and everybody who put this, who worked on this project did listen to the community. You included our ideas. We were there as community, we were there as Garfield parents, so thank you for taking our ideas into consideration. I have to give credit where credit is due. And also, when we talk about coming to the table, let's look at these tables and look at the actual numbers and confirm that when the people say they make a certain amount of income, that they actually make that income. We have a lot of people who have not only low income, but extremely low income, and some of us are paying 80% to 90% of our income in rent. So this is going to be, this new project is going to be a ray of hope for many families. And also, what happens sometimes is when this project is finished, the local people, the people that live there locally cannot qualify for these projects. So we talk about the numbers, we have 31-bedroom units, and these are supposedly for homeless people. And we have, in the current situation, we have up to eight people living in a one-bedroom, so this could make a difference, but I know you can't do that, because there are some rules on housing. But to make this picture, a perfect picture, we need more two-bedroom and more three-bedroom units at 30% AMI. Right now, we have two three-bedroom, and we have two bedrooms, we have three units. At three-bedrooms, we have zero units. So with almost 6,000 students being homeless in the school district, this is not going to be a big solution for all of that. We need more two- and three-bedroom units, at 30%, 40%, maybe up to 50% AMI, but 60% might be a little too much. But thank you for the city, thank you for all the work that you are doing, on behalf of the residents, to benefit everyone.
Thank you. And before we get Eduardo up here, I just want to say, you'll be allotted three minutes to speak on an item, unless additional time is granted by the chairperson. Please note that any documents submitted to the commission will remain as part of city records. Eduardo, can you please come forward?
Hi, I'm Eduardo Cortez. I'm the executive director of CHISPA, an organization that works to organize young Latinx access in Orange County. And we've been doing a lot of work around, well, some work around like housing development and tenant rights. I want to echo some of the points that Idalia made before me. First of all, I do want to, you know, recognize that some changes that the community asked for at the Sunshine Ordinance Meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, that were made, where the community asked that all the units be affordable housing units, and that this change was made, and that some of the market rate units that were originally included in the proposal were taken out and replaced with affordable housing units. And then secondly, I also want to ask for, you know, like for some of the changes that Idalia asked for, which is to try to increase the number of two- and three-bedroom units at extremely low-income levels, at the 30% AMI. Thank you.
Thank you, Cortez. Can you please have Mrs. Kyla Levitt, Maxali Lopez, and Maria Seja?
Hello, my name's Kayla Levitt, and I thank you all for your work, and thank you for listening to the community on their asks in regards to this project. I just wanted to speak as well to the affordability and unit mix. I'm a resident here in Santa Ana, and I think one of the most important things to consider is the compatibility with the current residents. And from my experience living here, it would better reflect the community if there are more extremely low-income and very low-income options at the two- and three-bedroom level. And then I also wanted to ask for clarification on how preferring the local residents of Santa Ana would be, because in some of the other options, there were more specific points of how that would be, made sure that it was a priority to prefer local residents here. So thank you for all of your work and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Levitt. Mrs. Maxali Lopez, please.
If I may, Vice Chair Santana responded to the question regarding the local Santa Ana preference. So the local Santa Ana preference is actually written into the loan agreement with the developer. So the loan agreement requires that the developer market and make their units available with a priority for local Santa Ana residents. And then once that loan agreement is drafted, then it's approved by City Council, and then executed with the developer. But two years down the road, now the developer, or year down the road, I mean, developer then begins, they draft their marketing plan for the project, and then they begin marketing the units to our local community. In their marketing plan, staff requires that that local Santa Ana preference is written into their marketing plan and into their tenant selection plan. And therefore, once they receive all the applications for the project, which these projects, the demand is far exceed, far exceeds the amount of resources that we can make available to meet the demand for more affordable housing, so they'll receive several hundred applications. But when they sort those applications, they will have to sort those applications based on local Santa Ana residents first, and then everybody else, anyone else, second. So that's the mechanics of how the local Santa Ana preference is applied for this. So, that's the mechanics of how the local Santa Ana preference is applied for this project as well as the other projects.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Hi, everyone. My name is Mashli Lopez, and I was one of the volunteer canvassers with Tenants United Santana that recently turned in about 9,500 signatures in favor of rent control from local residents. And today, I want to bring up some concerns as well as echo the request that was made by Idalia and Jairo. So, we're concerned here that city staff actually encourage affordable housing developers to forego maximizing the number of affordable units by highly encouraging they include market rate units. This should not be a standard policy by the city, and upon speaking with the developer, we heard two department directors encouraged this. We expect more from city leadership, and the community overwhelmingly has expressed a need for very low-income affordable units that are in opposition to what city leaders are promoting. We're expecting them to represent our community, and it should not have to take the community to tell developers to build affordable housing. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Ms. Seja?
Hello, my name's Maria Seja, and I'm also a Tenants United canvasser and volunteer and a Santa Ana native. My request here is to make more units available with an emphasis on two- and three-bedroom units for households earning 30% of the area income median. Also, for developers to be more inclusive, by this I mean engaging with the Lacey community and working with local organizations like Thrive. Continuous involvement with the community and local organizations could serve as a resource to assure that these projects successfully meet the needs of the Lacey community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seja. Can I please have Ms. Marilyn Montonio, Idel Depano, and Doug Guian? Marilyn?
Not here.
Not here. Idel?
Adiel? Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jairo Depano, Lead Pastor of Santa Ana United Methodist Church. This is new territory for us as a church, and so we're excited for the opportunity. Many United Methodist churches in Southern California are property-rich but cash-poor. Before we found ourselves in this partnership, the church thought that the best way to dispose of our 609 North Spurgeon Street property was to sell it, until we were enlightened that repurposing it into a complex of affordable housing will create a gift that will keep on giving and make us a player in responding to the number-one moral crisis of our country, and that is the lack of affordable housing. And so, we are grateful for this opportunity, and I would just like to encourage the Commission to stamp your approval and support behind this project. The church wished we could do more. We've heard the voices tonight, we've heard similar pleas from those community meetings that we participated in. At the end of the day, those 92 units will mean the world of a difference to those who will be housed there who otherwise would not be able to afford to live in Santa Ana where they wish to live. So, I thank you for your support and pray that you will be behind this project all the way.
Thank you, Mr. Depano. Mr. Doug Guian?
Good evening, and I'm, just as a long-term resident of Santa Ana, I've lived here since 1952. And it's interesting, you've noted the name on the project is Legacy. The three churches that were merged to make Santa Ana United Methodist Church date back a long, long time. Our Spurgeon congregation dates back to 1869. Our First Methodist Church congregation, where the site is located, dates back to 1873. And our Grand Avenue congregation, which is up on 2121 North Grand now, dates back to 1879. So, all of our congregations have been in the county before there was a county. We see this particular site, which became a church in 1900, as a gift to the city. Yes, we would like to do more with the particular properties as far as the makes, the mix and how the units are set up, but there are codes and there are regulations that restrict us from doing that, that we have to follow within certain guidelines. And so, in doing this, we have decided that this is the best we can offer right now, given the way the laws and the rules are set up. We look at this as being a key element in how we can help the city of Santa Ana, we can help the residents of Santa Ana, we can do something in a positive manner, and we would thank you for your approval on this project. Thank you very much.
Before we make a motion, can we open into discussion? Yep? Awesome. Let's start with Commissioner Frazier. Let's talk to Mr. Frazier.
You caught me totally unprepared.
Oh, and then you went, that's fine. I will go to Mr. Vasquez.
It's going to take me a while to internalize everything I've heard, so at this point...
Thank you. Mr. Tardif?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to address what Mr. Castillo brought up, a couple of things. I sympathize with his concern that Santa Ana is getting, you know, developed to a point that things are very crowded, and it is, it is a burden on our infrastructure. I agree. But then, there are also, there are state requirements that say we have to, we have to build housing, and those requirements kind of overlook other problems that we have. So, I can see that we, you know, this is really a needed project. Another point Mr. Castillo brought up was that the residents of Santa Ana could, or people could say they live here for a day or a short period of time, and they may not necessarily really be from this community. Is there some way we can incorporate a verification that someone lives here for a period of time before they are eligible to apply, as Mr. Castillo says, maybe lives here for a year? Can we do that?
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. In the Affordable Housing Funds Policies and Procedures, the definition of, is that the individual is a resident of Santa Ana and/or a person working in Santa Ana at least 32 hours per week for at least the last six months. And in terms of the definition of a resident of Santa Ana, we would, in terms of expanding upon that definition, we would adopt the same definition that's used by, same requirements that's used by our housing authority in terms of the verification requirements, and we can provide that definition requirement to the developer for their tenant selection plan.
Is that a commitment that you will do that, or pump it up to a year, or you can ask them, or?
Yes, yeah, we will provide that definition of how we verify residents for our housing authority waiting list to the developer.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Garcia? I'll give you more time.
I just want to thank all of our speakers for coming over tonight and giving us their thoughts and input.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear, Mr.?
I just said that thank you to the speakers that came forward tonight and presented your thoughts and input on this project. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there a way that staff can provide some insight as to what defines the mix of how they allocate these different units?
So, actually, that's a question best made for the developer. It's quite a complicated question. I can, like, Alexa, they answered that, or?
Just so we can maybe get a little clarity on how the mix landed where it did.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm Leslie Edwards. I work for National Core. Like you say, the, coming upon the affordability mix on a proper, on an affordable project is kind of a lot of things, a lot of factors that go into it. So, again, we've been, we've been asked to provide 35% permanent supportive housing, those are the 30% and below. So, that creates how we come up with how many 30% units. We actually added additional 30% units so that we would have some three-bedrooms at 30%. But it is economics, the economics of the project is to keep the city subsidy at a level that is, that they can manage and to create a sustainable project that can be financially feasible. I'm sorry, I get nervous in front of people. That this is the mix that we came up with, the most advantageous for the project on a financial level and a community service level.
To expand on that, it comes, it comes down to the financing that's being provided. So, if the city had sufficient funds to award, say, $6 million to this project, the developer would probably quickly be able to make all the units at 30% AMI at the deeper affordability levels. But as they, as they change the affordability levels for the projects, change the unit sizes for the project, that changes the rent amounts that they're able to get to maintain and operate the project over a lifetime of 55 years. And you can't think in a short-term range of 10 years, 15 years of, you have to think about that 55-year period, that this project is still going to be healthy and safe for every single family over that full 55-year period. And it's, it definitely becomes a complicated financial decision that draws on developers' resources as a nonprofit developer.
Right. And I was just going to add to that, looking at the fund, you know, the funding sources obviously drive affordability as well, and so, in order, the ASIC program, which we are going for the full $20 million state funding, that's a highly competitive program. You know, there's only a dozen projects awarded funding statewide throughout the entire state. And so, it's on a point system, and it's, again, it's kind of this black box calculation, but that also plays into it, is having a range of affordability makes you more competitive. So, it's really, it is balancing the needs, it's balancing the requirements that the city is putting on us, it's balancing the competitiveness of the funding sources, and we have to consider all of this to try to, you know, put together the affordability levels. So, it is a combination of factors.
Thank you. For my comments would be, I would like to echo what the community came out here and talked about affordability. And so, I know this item will be presented in front of City Council, and it's which, is it January 6th meeting, this project? When is it being presented?
We're aiming for January 15th, but absolutely no later than February 5th.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, I would like to echo the community comments, if that can be included in the city staff notes when it comes to affordability. I understand it's a big concern. That being said, well, I will, I'll email city staff more questions and more follow-up, but do we have a, do we have a motion to approve Item 6?
I'd make that motion, Chair. To approve a pre-loan commitment of $3,170,547 of affordable housing funds and eight project-based vouchers to National Community Renaissance and Mercy House for the development of the Santa Ana United Methodist Church project, Strategic Plan Number 5, 3C, according to the recommended action of the staff, as noted on the agenda, Items 1 and 2.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Can I, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Oh, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Frazier. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? Motion passes 5-0. At this point, can I call up our two Commissioners? And thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for being here and present with us.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Vice Chair Santana, for your work. We're now moving on to public comments. Does the public have any comments they wish to share with the Commission? Please note that you have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Romero Estrada. I'm a board member of Thrive Santana, our community land trust in Santana. And just considering that there are new appointments, I'd just like to reintroduce Thrive. Our mission is to build community wealth and resident leadership across generations by holding land in trust and driving development that ensures permanent access to affordable, healthy neighborhoods. So, as a community land trust, we seek to acquire and hold that for the community. We believe in supporting and centering community engagement and participation in the planning process. Many of our board members have an extensive and rich history working and living in Santana. Some of our board members are residents, too. Furthermore, our model is to be member-driven, to allow direct participation with neighborhood residents. So, we're happy to inform the Commission further about the land trust approach and welcome partnerships with any developers as well. With our, and lastly, with our resident-led perspective, I urge the city to strongly consider Thrive for future proposals to better serve Santana residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any additional members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing as there aren't, we'll move on to staff member comments. Does staff have any comments they wish to share with the Commission?
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Ramos. So, first, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the, to the Commission for hearing all the proposals and considering all the proposals that you heard tonight. I want to thank the community members who were, attended the meeting. It's rare that we get such sincere and active public participation in our process, and that's so important to have that representation, to have that participation in our, in our items, on behalf of our community and on behalf of our residents that we're all trying to serve. And lastly, I want to thank the developers who were here tonight for their partnership with the city and partnership with our residents and our Commission to develop these projects. To summarize the actions taken by the Commission tonight, the Commission altogether awarded $5.9 million in affordable housing funds and 100 project-based vouchers and three land assets owned by the Housing Successor Agency under a long-term lease agreement with affordability over a 99-year period. In terms of the number of units that will be developed through those awards with contingent on the approval by City Council and the housing authority, a total of 196 affordable, new affordable housing units will be produced. Of those units, 37% will be for two- and three-bedroom, will be two- and three-bedroom units, and 70% of those units will be for families at 30% AMI. So, a substantial success tonight. And not only that, two of those units will be for sale units for families seeking to move out of rentals into homeownership opportunities. So, a great, a great milestone, a great success by our community and for and with our community. I also want to take this opportunity to introduce our newest staff, Ms. Janice Heckus. Janice, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and talk a little bit about your background?
Sure. Hi, I'm so pleased to meet you and to be here, and I'm just so thrilled to be with the city of Santa Ana and to be your new Housing Programs Analyst. Analyst. My recent background, I have served for ten years as a residential lender, first doing construction financing before the credit crisis. After that, I moved into working with first-time homebuyers, down payment assistance, and most notably, working with the city of Tustin's Affordable Housing Program for ten years as their preferred lender. So I've closed about two hundred affordable housing loans, purchase and refinance, and I'm very familiar with eligibility guidelines and I truly believe in the mission of what we're doing here. And prior to that, I also have experience in city government, working for the city of San Jose and their budget office and also managing their CDBG program. So again, I'm really happy to work with you and I look forward to creating our mission together.
Thank you so much, Janice. And I'm also excited to announce that on January fourteenth, we will have a new community development analyst, starting with our team, Ms. Mikel Daly. She'll be joining us, her start date on January fourteenth, and I'll make sure to introduce her at our next Commission meeting. And lastly, I just wanted, in terms of the steps forward from here with the awards being recommended to City Council and the Housing Authority by the Commission, our next step from here is we are hoping to bring these recommendations to the City Council and Housing Authority on January fifteenth. That's what we're aiming for. If not, if we're not able to make that meeting, we are gonna bring, we are definitely gonna bring the award recommendations to the February fifth City Council meeting. As you know, we have three new council members on the, on the council. And there is definitely, we appreciate your, as, as the Commissioners, on behalf of those council members, talking to your, talking to your council member about the awards that we'll be bringing forward so that, so that we can educate our, our council members as much as possible on these projects and your recommendations before, before we bring the items forward for consideration. So with that, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Are there any other staff members that would like to make comments? Okay. Seeing as there are none, we're gonna move on to Commission member comments. Commission members, please know that no member may speak more than once until all have had an opportunity to speak. Also, the Commission may vote to limit our comments to three minutes each if we feel the need. Is there anybody that would like to begin? Okay, I'm gonna choose Commissioner Tardif.
I'd just like to thank the members of the community that came out and addressed the Commission for their input, very valuable and informative for us. I'd like to thank city staff for arranging good, really good projects for us to review and approve. And I'd like to thank the applicants for their projects. I think it's gonna be really great for Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tardif. Commissioner Rusua, would you like to continue?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of comments. One is to also thank the public for coming out tonight. I wanted to share that there aren't very many required public participation opportunities and that I noticed tonight, some of the applicants that came forward went out, you know, did their work in doing community outreach to get some public input and that tonight, the members of the public came to get some of their input as well. So I want to thank the Commissioners that took the time to listen and to voice those concerns and to ask further questions from the developers and from the staff. I think this is a, right, one of the, one of the few invaluable opportunities for public participation. I want to welcome or welcome back Commissioner Tardif.
Thank you.
Definitely notice, you know, him taking some of those comments from, from the public and bringing them back. I have another comment that is regarding an observation around the, the awarding process. I understand that we've, we've come, we've come a long way since there was the approval of the RFP process to begin with, to be able to invite developers to submit a proposal. I think that that has allowed for a review of multiple projects at once. I'm just wondering if there's also the opportunity, the ability to look at the bigger picture and what is the general need? Sort of in a, in, maybe in like a strategic planning type of way because we have limited amounts of vouchers, limited amounts of money available. And, and we just want to like anchor that in, in the context of what the need is. So I heard mentioned tonight, the Lacey and Crisis Research Document, which is, which is data that speaks to some of the needs in the Lacey neighborhood. I'm aware also that we have a housing element that perhaps we can reference because the housing element also speaks to the needs that we can help to achieve through some of our, in our role as a Commission. Thirdly, am I good with, with the comments so far?
Continue, Commissioner Rusua.
Yeah, we just need to make sure, because you recuse yourself on those items, you're not really supposed to be making any comments about that item.
Are they, can they be general observation, or I'm sorry, general comments based on, not on awarding some of the funds, but just on a process?
I think it would be best if we steered clear of, you know, everything that was discussed tonight and all the speakers and everything in that area, since you were recusing yourself from it.
Thank you, no, thank you, that's noted. Kind of generally, I wanted to make a request for training, if that's possible, just on, on financing and affordability levels. I think that that's a general, yeah, I think, area, like kind of area of information that would be helpful as Commissioners to understand is how does financing work and the affordability levels when developers come forward to make proposals? Yeah. Okay, I think that's where, that's where I'll leave it, given the, kind of, some of the limitations. But I thank all of the Commissioners for their work and also thank the staff and happy holidays to folks.
Can I just ask a quick question to our legal counsel? Are we, as Commissioners, including those that recuse themselves, able to comment on general processes that exist for this Commission without commenting specifically on the developers that came forward tonight and their project proposals?
Yes, you can certainly make general references and comments. However, some of the comments kind of geared towards specific information that was provided by the public towards the Commission during those items that you recused yourselves on. So if you want to make some general observations about, you know, kind of some of the, some of the later comments there were about, you know, educational opportunities for the Commissioners, for the public, that's fine. I just, we can't, you know, anyone who's recused themselves can't really make any comments or provide any information that could be interpreted as implying towards, specifically towards those projects that were considered tonight.
Thank you. So Commissioner Rusua, I would like to invite you to make any general comments that you may have, you were limited.
That's helpful. I think I'll just rephrase then that my requests are for education, just general training and education, and also for reference to documents like the housing element in the future that can speak to, housing element or some of the local data that exists that can speak, speak to the need that we're hoping to fill when there's opportunities for development. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rusua. Commissioner Vasquez, do you have any comments?
Oh, well, I just want to wish my esteemed fellow Commissioners and our hard-working staff and the people that we serve a Merry Christmas holiday and a prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner Vasquez.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Limon?
I have no comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you to the staff for bringing us some really good quality projects as far as historically being taken care of by developers that are homegrown in the area. There was a lot of information that passed across us today and there was a lot of explanation that really made it easy. But I think that mirrors the request for, for training. I'm not a very financially expertise person. So some type of a primer on how some of these things are designed is something that I would definitely benefit from. I'm sure that there are other Commissioners that could as well. But I'd like to also extend a happy holiday season, happy New Year to all the Commissioners as well as the citizens that we serve, as well as the staff who really puts in a lot of hard work throughout the year. And I think that goes understated throughout the year, so I'd like to definitely make that a point. Other than that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Garcia?
Just kind of echoing what everybody else said, thank you so much for a wonderful meeting. We approved some, some great projects tonight and I appreciate all the community coming out and voicing your opinions and I appreciate you sharing your expertise, your passion and your thoughts on all these projects. And again, it's been a great year. Congratulations on everything that's been achieved this year to the staff and supporting this Commission at our meetings, Ryan, Judson, Bianca and all the rest of the team. We greatly appreciate your support and answering a lot of questions. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. And I have a few comments and questions, but first and foremost, I want to thank the community members that came out tonight to express their, their concerns and their interests and especially those that are still sitting here right now. And then I also want to just thank everybody that's on this Commission and thank you for doing your, your due diligence and asking questions. And I encourage everybody in this coming year to continue to ask these difficult and sometimes uncomfortable questions. I think that that is our duty. And I think it's also a responsibility to ensure that we're a platform that can get answers for community members. So if they're asking questions to this Commission on whatever items are on the agenda, I think it's great when Commissioners are able to then ask those questions to staff and to the presenters that are here. I would also like to thank staff for your work. Our interpreter's no longer here, but I wanted to thank him for coming on. Oh, sorry, you are here. Thank you, thank you so much for coming on a two-hour notice. It is very appreciated and we appreciate your assistance in making sure that this meeting is more inclusive for everybody. And on that topic of inclusivity, I mentioned this to our recording secretary earlier today, Bianca, but I would like to request that our Commission agendas also be made available in Spanish, like the council meeting agendas are, and that any recordings or audio that is later available on the city website also be made available in Spanish. Along with that, oh, I also want to share a farewell message that I received from our former Commissioner and former Chairman Gary Wood. So I'm just gonna read from a message that was shared with me. So this is from, from former Chairman Wood. I would like just to tell you that, I would just like to tell you what an honor it has been to serve with you and represent our city doing such valuable work. I was humbled by your, by your nomination and election as Chairman and the opportunity it afforded me to represent our Commission. You are all incredible, talented, community activists and involved citizens, and I have enjoyed working with each of you and others who I do not have email contact with, but I hope you will pass this on. I wish you and the Commission continued success in moving Santa Ana in a positive direction. Best regard to Gary Wood. So if you see him, just let him know that you received that message. Along with that, I also just want to echo what was mentioned by Commissioner Rusua and later mentioned by Commissioner Frazier. I think it would be very helpful to have a training or a work-study session around affordable housing financing so we can better understand what those processes look like and ask more, ask, I think it'll also help us ask more informed questions. And then just also mentioning, I know Judson mentioned that we do have a few new council members and with that may come a bit of turnover on this Commission. So just in case it's my last meeting here, I want to thank you all for your mode of confidence in electing me Chairwoman. And I, I enjoy seeing you all here and I enjoy hearing the tough questions that you ask and just seeing you dedicate some time to bettering your community with your service on this Commission. And then last but not least, I would just like to welcome our new student, Commissioner Santana High School Saint Patricia. I'm happy to see you here and I hope that you enjoy your time here. And I would also like to welcome our new staff members. And that's it, happy holidays. So are there, are there any Commissioners that would like to say one last thing before our meeting is adjourned? No? Okay, great. So this meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at four thirty PM at the Council Chamber, twenty-two Civic Center Plaza, San